Okay, excuse me, I'm gonna take my mask off because it's... My voice doesn't carry well anyway, and it's worse coming through this, so... It's only a signal that everybody can do that, but just for a minute, please. The meeting is open, the beginning of the meeting, it's time for any member of the public who wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda, is there anyone here who wants to do that? Okay, good, in that case we'll move on to our agenda. We have first, two issues of determination of access. Is there anything that the two presenters want to do first? We're going to do Frederick Road first. This is the second hearing, we've already talked about this for a while, and we kind of didn't agree on how we were going to approach it, so it's a continuation from that. And now I think we have more photographs, more of the board has been up and actually looked at the road, and we've done quite a bit of research on past practice on this whole business of the width of the road and the condition of the road that we'll be able to share with you during the discussion time. Okay, Stuart, go ahead.
Great, so my name's Chris Harris, I am the applicant, and as you mentioned, we met a couple weeks ago, so I'm just gonna kinda go through the changes that we're proposing from what we discussed last time. Just kinda cut to the chase here, we are proposing to widen the clear area to 15 feet wide, and I can go through some images, but I just kinda wanna summarize this. I wanted to note as part of that, that currently no part of the existing gravel portion of Frederick is wider than 15 and a half feet clear, that's the section that's more to the west than what we were looking at. We're also proposing to add gravel and subbase to create a 12-foot wide way, and also to just point out in comparison that no portion of Frederick has a gravel surface wider than 11 and a half feet, so we're going wider than what is currently existing along any portion of that road. And then we're also proposing to clear up to 13 and a half feet the tree canopy. So that's kinda the summary, to walk through some of the images. So we looked at these before, but just to refresh your memory here, so this is the west end looking up towards the east of the section that we're talking about. We talked before about removing the broken asphalt and some of the rocks that are in this part, which would be part of this widening proposal. And also as part of that widening, we'd obviously regrade and put a crown on the road to help with the drainage, help prevent future potholes in the gravel. I'm just gonna buzz through this. This is the lot that we are proposing to build on, the portion of Frederick Road that we've been discussing is approximately 240 feet, and then there's also this existing kind of more developed part of Frederick that is also gravel that I was referring So we did meet with Mr. Cornock after the last hearing, and we happened to be there when the garbage truck came through, so I thought it would be helpful just again for reference, so you can see, this is the west end of Frederick where there are more houses currently, and we just took a series of pictures as it came down to the east. You can see it made it through without any issue, I think it did hit one tree limb at one spot as it comes down, and this is it going back out, but it used the hammerhead that's existing at the east end, it just turned around, went back out without any problem. So that's just an example of how it's currently being used. Then we also have a series of pictures just showing the proposed widening, so this is at the kind of west end, and then we'll be working east. We're proposing to widen pretty much just on the south side of Frederick, as I mentioned before, the grade on the north side makes it particularly difficult to widen on the north because of how quickly the grade goes up and the amount of retaining that might need be needed. And I actually included a letter at the end of the packet from a site contractor that has looked at the project, George Patello, so there's correspondence there to support the plan. So you can see here again, you know, what 15 feet clear looks like in terms of what needs to be taken away vegetation-wise. There is a nice stand of younger white pines, some of those will have to come down as part of this, and then just continuing on. Again, the grade is such on the south side that it's pretty manageable to kind of extend in that direction. And then finally, ending up on the east end, which is already, you know, wider to begin with, it's really that west end that's the tightest part, so hopefully that gives you some context there. That's pretty much it, just in terms of the site and the proposal.
Thank you, the pictures are really very helpful. Is there any other member of the public who wants to speak on this issue? No? On the board, questions, comments? We'll start down this end and move that way, John?
It's a nice presentation, and I appreciate the offer. Jed, what's the height that the fire department wants the tree canopy to be?
I believe it's 13 feet six inches.
Which is what he's offering?
Yes, yes, I believe so.
And they usually want, what, 18 feet wide?
The fire code, yeah, they would like to see an 18-foot width.
Okay. So whatever width we decide upon, with the dense grade and the gravel that applicants proposing to put in, if we approve that, as a condition, I would like to have either the engineering department verify that it's been done, that depth and width, or an engineer just stamp a plan or a letter stating that it's been done, so many length of feet and width and depth. Just want to be verified that it's been done properly.
Right, I think that what we'd be asking for is for the building commissioner to ensure that it's an as-built.
Either way, that's fine.
Okay, good, thank you. I'll put it down as an as-built. Bob?
No comment.
Jim?
Um...
You'll get another shot, you don't have to say it all now.
No, but I guess this is a good time to start with it. You know, I've been on the planning board a long time, and I was really in favor of saving these nice little country roads like this and keeping all the same, until it was pointed out to me, as a member of the planning board, our job is to take a 50-year view and look at not only the people there now, people are always gonna be there. And when I see an application coming in that's saying the road's 10 feet wide, and I drive on it, and my car's about eight feet wide, no way could I get by that truck coming down the road. I think every time we have a chance to improve these roads, we have to make them better. I don't think we have to make the burden all on one person, but anyone that can say that on a prima facie case, that this is a 10-foot ride road, and we don't have any right to comment on it, it's really turning into an argument that I take, I back off and say that. I believe we accomplished some really good things, we did get everything we wanted on Lewis Neck, but Lewis Neck Road's a lot better road than it was, and it's a lot safer road than it was, and I believe our job as a planning board not to make everyone here happy tonight, because that's all you wanna do is be happy tonight. But we're, our responsibility is for the next 50 years, and make decisions that are gonna be safe for everyone that lives there, and I would really have a hard time defending the 10-foot wide section of this road, saying that that's safe for two cars to pass, or a child on a bicycle, or anything. And our job is not necessarily to make everything happy, we have some tough decisions that have to be made, and this is a really tough one. I understand the burden shouldn't be all put in one thing, but previously developers of houses went out and got all the neighbors to chip in and made improvements, there was some effort, but I am not in favor of saying a 10-foot right-of-way is acceptable. Not a right-of-way, a drivable road is acceptable, and I might be a minority, and the rest of the votes could vote for it, but I have gone out to this road, driven it today, and saw it, and I really have a hard time seeing it even being close. Fire, I would love to see if the fire department said it was okay, and I could go with their dimensions, and I believe their dimensions is 18 feet, whatever, but 15 feet? I don't see, I have a small car, and I think it's 10 feet wide, how could two cars pass? Are we supposed to have a road? It's really a driveway. In a driveway, you're not allowed to build another house on it. We have to determine that it's adequate for a road, and I can't do it.
Okay. I'll pass for now, Pat?
Well, I have to make mention of the fact that our road is 14 feet wide, and yes, when two cars try to pass, you do have to pull tight to the side to get by, but it's not exactly an unsafe road either.
This is a ransom road.
Ransom road.
Yep.
It was an accident, a ransom road this year.
I'm still alive, Jim.
No.
I know.
She was in a coma for a while, but she's okay now.
No, there was a, you know...
I know, it was a deadly accident, okay, but it had nothing to do with the road width, it had to do with storm. The, it's not an ideal width, this is gonna be 15 and a half feet wide, the extent of the water main going up towards the house, so I think I don't have a problem with it being expanded to 15 and a half feet wide. But on the other hand, it also says that it's gonna be narrower in that at some parts, and I'm not quite sure where those parts are right now.
Do you wanna ask?
Well, that's what I'm kind of telling the board, and I would appreciate an answer to that, but let me finish too, because the also, I think we need to acknowledge the fact that we got a letter in here from the Sufridi, Sufridinis today, and I know this was brought up the last time, that they're concerned that with any kind of modification to the road, they could experience flooding down their driveway into their house, and I don't know anything about that, and so I'd like to have comment on both of those situations.
Would you like to comment now?
Is there an address associated with that house?
It's 43 Frederick Road.
I think that was if we, if the applicant paved the road, not if it's a gravel road, I think if it was paved, that was a concern, the water would run down into their yard.
It says any modifications to the existing road.
Okay, I misspoke then.
So that's the way I'm reading it.
Okay.
I heard that there already is a problem with one of the houses.
And that's what I thought I heard.
They did speak to us about that at the last meeting, but let's continue taking turns rather than everyone pitching in. Pat, is there more you wanna say?
No, that, those were my comments, and I'd like to have some explanation.
We'll get back to that. Paul?
I'm a little troubled by this too, because we are setting precedent, but we do have leeway to waive some of the issues here. After driving up to there and looking at it, it is a difficult area, but I would hate to mandate a very wide road would change the character of that area totally. So I'd lean in favor of trying to work something out that we can have a smaller roadway without having to clear everything there. I think that would make a lot of sense.
Pam?
Well, my question would be, down the road, are there any, and I should know this, and I'm sorry, homes that could be built that are not yet built in this development that the road width would be impacted by, or that the homes would be impacted by?
I think there are some unbuilt lots there.
Yep, there are actually two lots to the west of the two orange outlines, yep.
Both of those lots will have to go through the same process that we're going through.
Right, and we'll consider them when they turn up, but they would add to the traffic if that's what you're thinking.
Well, that's exactly what I'm thinking. You know, my concern is always, will there be more children at a bus stop? Will there be more individuals using the side of the road if there's no sidewalk? And all those things that impact a neighborhood, kids riding bikes, bus stops, things like that.
I think I could...
Okay, are you all set? Yeah.
Okay, then I'd like to say what it is I found out. I really felt ill-prepared before around all of this, although I've served for five years and we've dealt with non-conforming roads before, so between the last meeting and this meeting, I've gotten input from most of the departments that deal with the build environment here in Falmouth, and from the consultant we've hired to help us while we're finishing the staffing in the planning department, and that includes our legal department, and I'd like to share that with the board, so that you know, because I think that it really makes a big difference to us, the way we approach this. Falmouth is filled with dirt roads, all of different ages that have been looked at by planning boards, and by the ZBA, and by the boards in town, the health board, all at different times, across time, so there's a variety of experience with them. And the first thing I wanna talk about is precedent. Do each of those decisions now set a precedent? No, they actually don't. We are supposed to look at each one based on its unique characteristics, so we don't have to worry about setting a precedent here. What we have to look at are the unique characteristics of Frederick Road, and then soon enough, Telegraph Hill Road, because we won't set a precedent. Everyone brings a different one. Falmouth has a lot of different topographies. For example, suppose, and rather than being in West Falmouth, going up a hill, you were over there in Manant, which is on the sort of outwashed plain, very flat, a lot of big flat lawns and so forth, you don't have to worry so much about access because you're not digging into a hill, you're not driving down a hill. So say you're a fire truck, and you're coming there, and there's a car, you have room to go around them if you're in that part of town. So it really depends on the exact situation that you're looking at. So please, we should not be worrying about precedent when we're looking at A&amp;Rs, not our problem. In fact, one of the people with whom I spoke said that's a boogeyman bringing up precedent, so we don't really want to be doing that.
Say that again?
That it's a boogeyman, this president thing.
Boogeyman, okay, I didn't hear you. I agree.
Right, I haven't heard that term since I was a kid, so, and that's a while ago. Then, on the business of the road width, we thought that we had passed a policy, and it turns out in doing that, in order to have done that, we would've had to made a decision to do it and take it to town meeting. We didn't do it, or to register it somewhere, and we didn't do it. So in effect, we can just set that aside, we can now look at the individual circumstance and think what would be safe access. Safe, not the best possible access, just safe, that's our concern. And for that, we have a variety of widths that are possible. Apparently many years ago, under a long-term town planner, the then-fire chief and the then-town planner sat down and really thought this thing through, and they decided, well, what they really, really needed was a road where you could be in your fire truck, and you're driving along, and you hear the siren, there's an ambulance behind you, they have to get by you, and do you have room to pull off, keep two tires on the road, on the way, and have the ambulance get around you somehow? And it worked out to about nine feet. You go, wow, that's really skinny. So that was that conversation. Then there have been other conversations, but the whole point is, do you have some experience about this particular situation, where in fact they have had cars trying to pass one another in an emergency situation? Because that's the situation you'd worry about. If it's not an emergency, you've got room to back up, you've talked about having pullouts, there's a way around it. But in an emergency situation, do you have room to pull off and get around with the vehicles that are going to be of any assistance to you? So that's really what we should be thinking about, and it's not just the width, it's the condition of the road. You know, if you're trying to do that, and you're in a mud hole, you're going nowhere. So you need some sort of construction to the road, but don't worry about the precedent, don't worry so much about the exact feet, think about the exact circumstance of the road. So, Mr. Harris, you might wanna say again the improvements you're going to make there.
Okay, so we are proposing to widen the clear area of the portion of the road that starts about here and extends to the end of the lot in question, which is this here, so widen that to 15 feet clear area. This section from 25 Frederick to 40 Frederick is approximately 15 and a half feet at its widest part. I would add the paved section of Frederick Road is 14 feet wide. We are then proposing to regrade and add gravel and subbase material, again from roughly 40 Frederick to the east end here, at a width of 12 feet for the way, and limb up to 13 and a half feet. I don't think the school bus comes down Frederick Road, I think the stop is actually out at the corner of Frederick and Old Shore Road, but I don't, is it? So that's the actual bus stop currently, now that could change, but that's the current situation. And I think with the turnarounds that we've proposed previously on this side, and the existing hammerhead, as well as the visibility, there's more than enough places to pull off, whether you're at this end of Frederick, or the hammerhead, or into the pull-off that we've shown here, that you could get out of the way if there was another car passing So I think, yeah, I think that covers a couple of your questions.
I think it does cover it. Are there any questions?
There was the question about the drainage, the people who were concerned about flooding with any change to the surface of the road.
You know, I can't comment specifically on that, we're asked to widen the road, it will be gravel, it should perk better than it does currently, because the material that's there is really compacted and not gravel. That's not the low point in the road here at 43, so I'm not sure that the concern of flooding the garage is necessarily, you know, the low point is actually out here at this corner, which you can see it puddles there, but I'm not sure that that 43 is impacted any differently than it is currently.
Jim?
Yeah, have we had a referral from the fire department of what they think about this?
So the fire department asked for an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet, and I think that that's important too.
We're overruling the fire department, right? That's our recommendation.
Yeah, that is the current fire code, and I think it's worth noting, it's an unobstructed width, so I think we're talking about two different things, perhaps with the travel, the actual travel surface.
No trees.
And then it's the vegetation on the side of the road. However, in conversations with the fire department this week, they indicated 18 would be satisfactory. This is, what they gave to us is the current fire code, but they would be happy with 18.
I would ask, would they send a letter saying that this is the approved plan? That's really what I'm looking for.
Oh, just a moment, it's not up to them to do that.
I'm asking for a referral from the fire department, because I believe their judgment and life safety is better than ours.
We already have their information, but we are the board that has given flexibility. That's the bylaw.
So I think to summarize what Charlotte just said, the process is, you know, we ask for their input, and then the building commissioner's asking for your input, and so their input feeds your input to the commissioner, who then would issue a building permit.
In a second, what we're giving is the building commissioner our opinion, so if we say we're endorsing it, our opinion is this is good, but we could condition that endorsement for things for him to be aware of, and make sure it actually is completed as proposed, as built. Is that right?
Correct.
So we're giving an opinion to the building commissioner when we decide what we wanna do. If we have a majority here, we say, fine, we'll endorse it, but with these conditions, that's the status it has. It's an opinion going to the building commissioner. On whom rests the occupancy permit? John, did you wanna say something?
I can tell you what I would support.
Good.
I would support clearing it 18 feet wide, and dense grade and gravel 15 feet wide, the length that the gentleman is proposing. And in the clearing 18 feet wide, a good portion of this road is in his property, so he might be clearing it just for his front yard. It's not, I don't think it's punitive, but regardless, we need to make the fire department happy.
So the condition you're looking for is it's 18 feet wide.
Clear.
Clear, unobstructed, and dense grade 15 feet wide in front of his own property.
Right, and with either an engineer's letter, or the town engineer saying that it's been done that way.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just have to...
Paul?
Yeah, one final comment, you noted, you mentioned you're gonna improve the road to the edge of your property. Why wouldn't you continue to the hammerhead?
Well, that's beyond the property lines, but...
It's pretty close on the map, it looks like.
It's essentially right, you know, it's right there at the end.
Not his, no.
Somebody else's property.
Well, if the condition of the hammerhead is not good, you're not gonna be able to turn around.
Actually, the condition of the hammerhead, okay.
Well, the garbage truck was able to turn around without a problem at the hammerhead, and Mr. Cornock can acknowledge.
Yeah, at the site visit, in fact, the hammerhead provides parking for two vehicles, and we did, we witnessed the trash truck maneuver in that area and turn around and get out.
Yeah, and I could turn around on it with no, no problem at all, there was room for another car beside me, I turned into the right, on the right-hand side certainly there's room.
So that's my proposal.
Okay, you making that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just a clarification, the gravel is 15 feet?
Dense grade and gravel, 15 feet wide.
Dense grade, and then on the side, no crush.
The clear side is 18 feet wide and 13 and a half feet high.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Could I just point out, there's no, there's no part of Frederick that has 20 feet clear wide, even the paved part, isn't it? The paved part is 14 feet wide paved, and that, you know, one section is just barely 14 feet wide, so I'm not sure, you know, I understand that you're trying to improve this portion, but we're talking about 240 feet of road as compared to what's remaining on the rest of the stretch.
I understand, but that's my, that's my...
Okay, but he's not saying 20 feet, he's saying 18 clear.
I know what he's saying, and I know what I've said.
No, but I don't think he understood what you said.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Say it again.
Yeah, I think the proposal was 18 feet wide.
John, could you say it again so we understand?
Clear 18 feet wide.
Right.
Dense grade and gravel 15 feet wide for the length that you proposed here, and 13 and a half feet high on the canopy.
Go back to the photos, Chris, to show 15?
Don't, no, please don't...
The way this works, this is televised, so that the only way you can speak here and have it be any part of what goes on is by being recognized by the chair and going there and speaking into the microphone. So we don't have any speaking from the chairs?
I think this just points out, right, so this is 15 feet clear. If we want to add another five feet to that.
Three feet.
Three feet. Three feet to that, what's involved.
Or a foot and a half on each side.
Yeah, a foot and a half on each side.
We're not able to clear to the north side. The grade does not allow it. The grade goes up immediately on the north side. At least for this first, for this first, you know, kind of half of it, until it opens up at our, the lot that we're looking at. I'd be happy to go with the 18-foot width along the length of our lot that we're talking about. I think it's excessive in this section that's 120 feet or so long.
I made a motion.
A second.
Okay, and it's been seconded? Any other discussion on it?
Let's just clarify what that motion is right now.
John, one more time.
Clear.
18.
18 feet wide, clear, brush, trees, et cetera. Dense grade and gravel 15 feet wide. And the canopy 13 and a half feet, which is what he's proposed anyway. And this is what the fire department's looking for.
For the entire length of the road?
From the beginning to the end of his property line.
Yeah.
I say him, their property line.
Okay, and part of your motion is that you want to ensure that it is going to be conditioned on an as-built to the building commissioner?
Or, or a sign off from the engineering department. Either way.
If there's no further input, let's vote. No, no, we've moved on. Thank you. So how do you vote, Bob?
In favor of that motion.
John?
Aye.
I support it.
Jim?
Do you support it?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Unanimously supported. And could you write that up and be sure it goes to the building commissioner as stated?
I will.
And I hope this is satisfactory. I hope it works out for you. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We now come to another one, Telegraph Hill. Who is speaking for that? Jeb, do you want to change the pictures?
Well, good evening. Always fun to go after someone with the same issue and that type of...
Um, sir, could you state your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Douglas McDonald.
Thank you.
I'm the applicant for 59 Telegraph Hill Road. I am not the owner of the property. I am buying it subject to obtaining a building permit. And we understand and agree with the town's desire to have adequate width, grades, and construction to provide for safe vehicular traffic in all private ways and roads. Placing the burden, though, to upgrade this road on one lot owner is, I feel, is inequitable. And it's not the appropriate course of action in, for this particular situation. And as a result, you do have the provision O of the Falmouth Determination of Access Policy. And I'm asking that the conditions may be waived by the planning board. And under that provision O, it says, "Conditions may be waived by the planning board to preserve the character of the neighborhood." And I'm asking for the planning board to apply that provision O of that policy that you put into place. I feel that a more reasonable solution to implement corrective road improvement is a betterment bond. It spreads the cost amongst all Telegraph Hill Road property owners more equitably and with the town's enforcement capabilities. I do want to point out the... I did a little thing on the assessment of the values of the property. Up there, there are 15 lots. One of them is owned by the town of Falmouth. One of them, this happens to be the last lot up there. The building, the current building property owner had obtained a building permit for back in 2004 without any of these additional encumbrances at that time, in terms of the road. Unfortunately, he passed away, wasn't able to build a home. But Telegraph Hill Road with the 15 lots, their collective assessed value is $8.3 million. It's 8.3 million. The last lot to be developed is 59 Telegraph Hill Road, and that has a value of $197,000. You know, that represents about 2.4% of all the values. That is a loop. As you know, there's an east side and a west side. And to ask one property owner, who happens to be the last one there, they could have built in 2004, they didn't. But then say, okay, we want you to bring the road up to grade is a heavy burden. And so it's why I am asking for the application of provision O, that you preserve the character of the neighborhood. I have gone up and I've spoken to a number of neighbors at the last meeting. There was also other people who had spoken here as well. All of them had made requests, they expressed reticence towards widening the road. And it, you know, puts a, it puts a, somebody who's going into the neighborhood and you're trying to gain favor there, puts you in a, almost in an adversarial position with your neighbors from the beginning. And while I do feel this should be something that's handled by the town via a betterment bond as opposed to asking one person to come in, the last one, and carry the cost because he can. I did look at that and, you know, one of the things that I came up with at the eastern side of the, and I'll go back to the map. If you're looking at the Telegraph Hill, it comes up Blacksmith Shop Road, you take a right. There's some distance between Blacksmith Shop Road and where the road widens. And we call that, I call that the eastern side. And then there's the western side of the road. And so from Blacksmith Shop Road all the way up to the lot, you know, we would raise the canopy, trim up to 15 feet in addition to just asking for the planning board to apply provision O of the determination of access.
And the part that you actually are looking for some leniency on or flexibility on is the width, is that right?
Yes.
So it would be, what width are you proposing as acceptable?
Leave the road as it is. In terms of, in terms of condition O, it says, "Conditions may be waived." This is your policy. "Conditions may be waived by the planning board to preserve the character of the neighborhood." And the, and the perspectives that I've gotten from the neighbors I've spoken to, they like the character of the neighborhood, they like the way it is, and I'm asking that...
So you're not proposing to change the 10-foot width?
No.
Widen it at any point?
No.
Are you proposing any pullouts?
Any?
Pullouts, places where someone coming along has a prepared space that they could pull their car into so another could go by.
There are a few spaces where that is possible currently at the, at the end of the road. It is a loop, but right in front of the lot there, there's space for vehicles to pass by each other.
But you're not proposing to add to those?
No.
Okay. I just want to understand what you're bringing to us.
I was, I was asking, I was asking the planning board to apply provision O of the policy.
Yeah.
And, and in addition to that, adding, limbing the trees up to 15 feet.
Okay, but you're not, all right, but that's all you're proposing to change from the last time we heard this? Just maybe additional limbing, just so we're clear on it.
Sure.
Is there anyone else in, from the public who wishes to speak about Telegraph Hill? If it's possible to not repeat things we already know, that would be good.
Attorney Chris Levhers, I do represent the property owner. And we are in support of Mr. McDonald's application and his presentation here tonight. Again, I, this isn't rocket science. I think we all understand the basic problem. We have boards of the past and building departments of the past and developers of the past that built and developed properties in conformity with the requirements at that time. Time changes, things go on. We have 13 developed lots on the site. And one could argue that somebody made a determination somewhere along the way that the access was adequate for those 13 properties. Ready one more. And actually, this particular property, if you've been to the site, actually has more width out in front of it than probably some of the other lots that are already well-developed. I do understand looking to the future. And I do understand that if a parcel of vacant land were to be laid out today, you would want to see roads built to today's standards. But they don't exist. This is not one of those situations where you can do that. And I think you have to ask yourself, are you doing more harm than good here trying to force 2022 road design standards to 1962 approved subdivisions? And there was a letter in your file from, from Wyn Davis that, who was a former town planner, who very articulately laid out for the board that that road was determined to be satisfactory at that time for those lots.
Could I just say that people have, it used to be only two years. Once you got an accepted, it was acceptable, that permission, we'll call it, lasted for two years. That date was changed a while ago because things are slower now, it's more complicated to get things built. It's now three years. You have three years to act on one of those letters of acceptance. If you don't do it, you lose it. That's it. So anything written in 2004, which I believe that one was, doesn't apply any longer. Just, just so you know, for future use.
And I don't think I'm trying to make that argument. We're not seeking a building permit here tonight. We're seeking a way for this board to advise the building commissioner relative to conditioning a building permit. We're talking about access. It is what it is. And by the way, you had, you heard a presentation before us tonight and you could probably have a dozen or 20 or 30 or 40 of these in other parts of town. These situations do exist. They're inconvenient at times, but they're also charming at times. And as Mr. McDonald had indicated to this board, you could poll everyone on Telegraph Hill Road. I doubt very much they want to see that road built to 40 feet wide. And somebody, somebody up here spoke earlier, you know, we're talking about people going to be losing front yards. And you have to ask yourself, are you creating more problems than you're solving by asking that roads be widened and certain things happen? I would ask the board, do we have any particular knowledge that there have been problems there? Have there been accidents? Have there been safety problems? I mean, can we use some common sense and ask ourselves, are we aware that this has really been a problem? Or are we simply trying to sort of implement a policy that I would respectfully suggest doesn't fit this application? Mr. McDonald made a very, very sound offer or a suggestion when he, when he said, "There are other ways to look at this." And I think maybe this, this board might want to consider some type of policy to look at these types of situations and address them in a more equitable manner. 13 of these lots are developed. One lot that was approved at the very same time and may not have been built upon for this reason or that reason. It just doesn't seem fair and equitable to put the burden of improving Telegraph Hill Road on this one parcel. It just doesn't. I don't think anybody in the, in the crowd could even possibly think that that's fair and equitable. And I think we're allowed to use our brains. I think we're allowed to use some common sense. And I think this might be something for town needing to take a look at down the road.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? We'll move on to board comment. We'll start at the other end. Pam?
I think this is so not unique to Falmouth. I think across the entire Commonwealth, we have these issues. I don't know how you do it in one fell swoop where you make it right because I don't think you can do that. But I think what some communities have done is they do a five-year look back. So if something today is developed, they have five years to build it out. And as you approach that five-year deadline, it can come before the planning board, depending on who has the jurisdiction. And then you relook it because these 20-year periods of time are ridiculous. Because anyone that lives in any neighborhood in town knows what happens if you've been there for any period of time. It doesn't exist anymore. Our house was built in 1980. We've been in Falmouth for six years. And the neighborhood would never be the same, under the same guidelines as when it was approved. So I think there is a mechanism. I don't think tonight's the night to decide that. But there has to be a mechanism where we can not tie our hands behind our backs and say, this is the way it's going to be in perpetuity. Because you just can't do that. It doesn't make any sense.
Pam, could you comment on your sense of the adequacy of the road, the access?
I'm sorry?
What's your sense of the access of the 10-foot wide road?
I'm not sure you can do a blanket statement that this road, the entire width, the entire length, because again, it's not, it's not the same. It's different.
I mean, during the length of the road, the road changes?
It usually does.
It does.
I mean, your road, if you approach your house or you approach my house, it's very different.
Not super, that's true. But we're looking at just this road.
Right. And what I'm saying is, as we look down the road, I think there has to be a mechanism such as, instead of, I don't know what it is here. Is it 20 years grandfathered?
No. No, 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 no. If you have a building permit, you now have gone through the A&R process. It's acceptable, you can build on that, you have three years to do it. And after that, it might have changed so much, it's no longer acceptable, you start over. So it's three years. We already have a rule on that.
And that's for both commercial and residential?
I believe that it is. I think that it is.
Okay.
Yeah, Paul?
I look at the other properties. One goes back to 1950. And the last one built was about 14 years ago. So it would be a tremendous burden for one property owner to try to have to do this for everyone. And I think there's a concern there. However, 10-foot wide is really narrow. And I'd be very concerned about 10-foot wide. I think we have some ability to make it less than 18-foot. But 10-foot wide is just not going to work.
Not going to do it. Pam?
Not going to do it. Pam?
Pam, excuse me, sorry, sorry.
Do you want to be Pam tonight?
No, I want to be Pam now.
Okay. I'm confused, because everybody is saying 10 feet wide. Yet the staff report says 12 to 14 feet wide. So I'm confused. Is it 10 feet? Is it 12 to 14? I don't know. 10 feet wide is absolutely not enough. I have another problem, too, because in the-
Could we clear that up now?
Yeah.
We can.
So the staff report that I put together for you, those are approximate distances. I don't have a tape measure in the car. However, the engineering review that is included in that staff report indicates three measurements along the east side, ranging from 9 feet 9 inches to 14 feet 9 inches. So it varies along that eastern side of the loop.
Right, from a little over 9 feet to a little over 14 feet?
Correct. And 14, 9 is right in front of the subject property. So that's where that pavement comes into, begins to play.
Okay.
Okay, that's plenty wide, as far as I'm concerned.
The 9 feet part?
No, the 14 feet.
Oh.
Okay. My concern here, though, is it said, "Well, there's never been a problem as far as danger goes." And yet, then I read here, "The town plows the entire loop. This road is on a private contractor's route, and the town often must go in with a town vehicle when the private contractor cannot clear the road adequately enough." That's a problem.
Because?
Because a pickup truck with a plow cannot do an adequate job of clearing, and so the town has to send in a larger vehicle. That's a safety matter, I would think. I'm just pointing these things out that are giving me pause here. Do I think it's right to have somebody have to do the entire roadway when I'm looking at the length of this loop? No, I don't, but I don't know any way to rectify that either.
Okay. Jim?
I have two things. I had experience of driving the road today, and I drive a small car. And we came up, a pickup truck came up, and he had to back up 500 feet before we could get to a spot to turn around. And, because it's a 10-foot-wide road, and there was just no room. And he was one of the people in the neighborhood that backed up. He knew how bad the road was. He put his truck in reverse and backed it all the way up so we could get through, all the way till we could turn around. There was just no place to go. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, many members are quoting a policy, which our chairman just said doesn't even apply anymore, because it shouldn't have been. And so to say that we have to use Section O of a policy that our chairman just said we don't want to use anymore, doesn't seem to make any sense of an argument. So I have a real problem. I think this is a safety hazard. And I would go along, I guess I'll go along with everybody else, if there's some way it could be made safer, but we just can't approve. If you approve a 10-foot-wide road, shame on you. Shame on you if you do it.
Bob?
Yeah, I agree. 10 feet is way too narrow. Something that I like to correct, people talk about 40-foot width or 20-foot width. We're talking about the road layout, not just the part that is traveled on. So when people talk about sections of their front yard, it's really not their front yard if it's within the road layout. The road layout is for utilities.
Well, it's in what they think of as their front yard.
Right, but it really isn't. So we need to get that cleared up. And I don't think one person should be responsible for redoing an entire road, but it does vary in width. So if on one corner of his property, it's 14 feet wide, just go the length of the frontage of his property. At least it's one section where somebody wouldn't maybe have to back up 500 feet in order to turn around. Just this past snowstorm, the road I live on is 18 feet wide. One plow lifts down, and you couldn't pass two cars. I had to wait until I could pull into somebody's driveway in order to let someone pass. So, you know, it is a safety issue, and I'd be in favor of widening a section in front of this property, the subject property, so that it would give some relief if somebody did need to pull over and allow someone to pass. But I don't think the entire loop should be on the shoulders of one homeowner.
John?
I have a question. There was a letter in the folder from the planning board 2004 where they approved as a buildable lot. I don't understand why we have to address anything.
That letter no longer obtains.
It lapsed.
It expired. It lapses.
Three years.
Under the old rules, two years. Under the new rules, three.
I think, okay. Well, I thought the rule for three years is if it's a recorded decision for a building permit. I thought it was for a building permit. I don't think it applied to this, but-
It apparently does apply.
But I agree with Bob. I would go along with the, what we just had the previous applicant do, 15 feet wide. Clear 18 feet and have dense grade and gravel 15 feet wide in front of their property.
You mean only in front of their property?
Yes, and clear the canopy from where the road forks to their lot, to 13 and a half feet high.
Before we hear that as a proposal, I'd like to say what my thought is.
And I just want to continue.
Yeah.
The real saving grace on this compared to some of the other roads that we've been involved with is this road has two ways in, two ways. It's a loop. It's not a dead-end road. And I was with Jim today, and the gentleman had to back up about 500 feet. There just was no way he could get around us, or we were going to get around that vehicle. But that's what I would support.
That's what you would support?
Yes.
Well, here's my thought on it. I agree with you that you can't put everything onto the last homeowner on the road. That's preposterous. But to say that it's in front of his own yard, that his own house, that's not preposterous. But I am disappointed. I thought that you, two weeks ago, were saying you were considering having some pullouts so that on the section on the east side, yes, I've driven that road also, and yes, it's a loop, but one piece of the loop is really difficult. I'm sure people avoid it if they can. To have pullouts along that east side, you didn't look at that?
I never said that, that pulls. What I did say is that I would talk to Jed about what he would like to see happen. And then I'd go back and speak to the neighbors and take a look at the situation. Rob, just as a point in terms of the property, on this, in this development, many of the lots cross over the road, so, you know, I'll just say, you know, my neighbors who happen to be here, or potential neighbors, right in front of my house, technically, it's their land. So if you were to take a look right here, you can see this is their house. Their land goes all the way down here. So as I pull out onto the road, the road technically is on their property. And so as you go down this lot, you go to the next one, like the town of Falmouth is right here. This is their property. They have, they border both sides. And in fact, if you were up there today, Jim, you'd notice that that section of the road is probably the worst in the sense of its width and how it drops off on either side. It'd be nice to see if the town of Falmouth will be willing to step up and help if it's such a concern about the emergency vehicles. Again, I don't disagree with the intent of the policy. I'm just trying to find out something that is equitable. But as you go down this whole property there, you are, as the attorneys mentioned, Chris mentioned that you are cutting down people's trees and doing stuff to their property. It's not like it's a public, it's public property. It's private property that-
Right, it's all private property.
There's a right of way there.
Okay, but I'd like to also emphasize that what we give you tonight is just our opinion going back to the building commissioner. Whether or not you get a building permit is really up to the building commissioner. It's sort of surprising he would even advise you to come here for this, knowing that what you're proposing is really subpar and puts us in a very difficult position of approving a patently unacceptable road.
Well, I did speak to the building commissioner, and he said that his opinion was that the building permit that he had issued back in 2004 in terms of it being a buildable lot still stands today. But he said he needed to make sure that it, you had to get sign-offs from the health department and from the planning board and to go through this process for the determination of access. And so that's what we were doing. And when I was looking at your provision there, and Jim, you're calling out that it doesn't apply today, but when I read the policy, it did have it down there, and that was my, that was my request to the planning board tonight.
Chairman said it doesn't apply.
Pardon me?
He has just to actually internalize that. The part that doesn't apply deals with the width of the road that this board made a decision on. That's the part.
The whole policy doesn't apply.
No, no. It's about the width. It didn't apply because it was overreaching. It's beyond our authority. So, thank you. And you're still, there've been different statements about the width of the road, but I think yours was that it's more or less 10 feet, and-
It varies. When you say more or less 10 feet, it goes 10 feet to probably 14 feet.
In places.
I'll let, if Jed wants to speak more about it, yeah, it's not 10 feet all the way.
It's also included in the previous meeting's staff report, but I'll call it up here. And it was measurements done by the engineering division on your behalf. If I can just get there. Okay, so it is not. I'm fibbing a bit. It is not included in the PDFs that we have tonight. I do have a copy, and I believe that you folks received a copy in your cabinet.
It's here.
Perhaps what I could do is-
I don't have that.
Can I?
That's why I'm offering to share it with you. Thank you. It was in two weeks ago's packet. Jeb?
Here's our subject property. I'm going to just turn on the road layer. And so what you'll notice here is this red loop is the portion of Telegraph Hill on the right-hand side. You can see that it's shown by ownership, so Telegraph Hill is a private road. The engineering division took several measurements along Telegraph Hill, and we have approximately at this location here, 14 feet 3 inches. Making our way down the road, this is roughly 13 feet at this location. Approximately here, 11 and a half. This is approximately 12. Down in this loop here, they have measured 12 feet 9 inches. The bottom of the loop, approximately 13 feet 6 inches. About this area here, 14 feet 9 inches. 12 feet 3 inches here. Approximately this location, 9 feet 9 inches. As you can see, along the roadway itself, it varies dramatically.
Did you put the pointer on the lot that we're discussing?
Right here.
And I think one of the issues there, and John, look particularly at this, is the part that you're talking about widening it to is not part of the lot. Remember, it has that peculiarity.
Yeah.
I can zoom in here.
And what that owner appeared to be seeking was an assurance that it was going to be an attractive change that was made, that it was not, not a big change. They are not looking for a 15-foot clearance there. And it's their property, not his.
So if it helps the discussion a bit, I believe pavement begins approximately here. This is where the pull-off, the very large pull-off where the old water tower used to be, exists. I think pavement begins roughly there, and it extends down around this loop. And I think it ends approximately here, give or take.
I don't know, it goes farther. It goes up to the town of Falmouth property.
Okay.
Yeah, the tennis courts there, yeah.
Okay.
Could you go back to the other view?
Sure.
Now, does this parcel border any other road? On the back side?
This one here?
Yeah.
Route 28.
Route 28, okay. So-
Yeah, right off the edge of it.
If the other houses have already been determined that there's access to them, the way I see it is, he's just a driveway off of that, because it's not his property.
There's no road frontage.
There's no road frontage.
He has, we discussed it at the last meeting, where he has the ability to access Telegraph Hill.
Right, I understand that, but-
I think, you know, I think the building commissioner's position was that in order to get out of said property, they'd have to access Telegraph Hill.
It almost looked like the person next door owned the whole parcel and did an A&R lot, but didn't give any frontage to that lot.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that's what happened, but that's how it appears.
You mean this property here?
Yes.
So-
Yeah, well, they chopped it up to give it frontage.
Correct.
You have to have frontage on Telegraph Hill Road.
Yeah.
Correct. So the way in which this parcel accesses Telegraph Hill is through an easement granted over this property.
There's no frontage, just an easement.
Right.
Correct. And the easement allows them to access Telegraph Hill.
Well, our concerns here on the board are frontage and access, and this lacks clear frontage.
Well, as we described last time, and again this time, the question before you tonight is, is the access adequate? Access has been determined, and you're trying to determine the adequacy of said access. Does it have adequate access, which is with-
Is that easement documented?
Yes, it is.
I don't see how someone can improve someone else's property.
That's sort of a separate matter.
We're getting into law here. This plan is a little misleading. This entire area is the way, the right of way. We're confusing what's built on the ground with the way itself. This is a right of way that this property does progress. This is a right of way. Then you have the subdivision plan from 1962 in the file, and I think if you take a close look at it, it's there. Bear in mind, there was never, nobody ever questioned whether there was rights to use Telegraph Hill Road at any point in time. Again, this is your right of way. This property owns it, but let's not be confused with property rights. This parcel has the property right as well to make use of the right of way. The ownership in number 55, but use rights in number 59. So I don't think it's accurate to say, you know, they're using somebody else's property to access Telegraph Hill Road. They have rights on the way. That is a right that they own. They're not negotiating with the owner of lot 55 to get to Telegraph Hill Road. They possess that right. I hear you, and I hear what you're saying. The process is flawed, in my opinion, this entire thing that we're sort of going through, because as often as we are saying it's unfair to place this entire burden on one lot or one individual, in this case, Mr. McDonald, at the end of the day, that's what you're doing. That's the only thing you can do, is obligate Mr. McDonald to do all of this work. Because the process that's before you tonight, there's nobody else. You can't go to lots 1 through 13 that are already developed up there and obligate them to do anything. So whatever this board does, it's going to obligate one person, Mr. McDonald. And I will tell you that if the obligations become so onerous that Mr. McDonald walks away from the transaction, which is his right, and in fact, he may very well choose to do so, that's not going to change anything on Telegraph Hill Road. You're still going to have the very same situation, and we've accomplished nothing. So again, this is a difficult process, because we are talking about one person having to benefit everybody up there. I think Mr. McDonald offered an alternative that's not before the board tonight, but I think it's something to consider as we look at these situations down the road. But lot 59, lot 11, I believe it is, it has the right, no question about it, to use that other land for access. It is a right.
To have that clarified. I think we understand now. So, John, do you want to repeat your mo, is that a motion?
Well, if they, if they don't have, if they don't own the property, how can I make them improve it? Not me, but the board.
Right, then let's just decide if we want to-
I don't think we can put that condition on it.
Correct, let's decide...
But what I did hear that was interesting was that Mr. Gore determined in 2004 that it's a buildable lot, and he still says it's a buildable lot. I don't understand why we even have to make any determination at all.
I don't either. I don't think he should have sent it here, but here it is.
Madam Chair?
Is that, yes.
May I clarify?
Mm-hmm.
So I believe what the applicant is referring to is a letter of buildability. That is what Mr. Gore issued in 2004. In 2004, there was also a determination of access granted by the planning board. But there was no physical building permit that we could find. We contacted the building department, we scoured our records. We could not find a physical building permit. Therefore, that determination of access back in 2004 lapsed. And therefore, that is why you're reconsidering it this evening.
Right, so we're strictly considering a determination of access with no improvements changed. So shall we make a decision now?
What, repeat that again?
We're voting whether or not we, to endorse the A&R, no approval needed, on Telegraph Hill Road for that lot, that the access is adequate. How do you vote, John?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote. John, in favor?
Aye.
Paul?
I'm going to give him a mulligan on this. Aye.
Jim?
I cannot approve a 10-foot wide road, and shame on anybody that votes for it. If anyone ever dies, I hope they're held responsible for it.
Um, negative. I vote against it.
I vote against it.
I vote against it.
I vote against it. Right, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
You voted it down.
We voted it down. So that opinion goes to the building commissioner, and he can do what he wants with it. Now it's up to him, really. We have to find a better way.
Good job, that was hard. That was really hard.
I know.
It was hard. I don't know how you do it. Good job.
It was, but it was, you couldn't do it. Less than 10 feet wide. Well, in places, but in enough places. In other places, it's 11 feet wide. And those two had to back, the truck had to back down. We're just trying to make ourselves feel better now. Okay, so...
I'm blaming the 2004 planning board.
Um, right.
Well, at least we made it clear you can't bring up an 18-year-old decision and try to jam it through.
Right. Whatever. Now, we're on to the public meeting part. Paul, do we have notices?
No, for this one, Madam Chair.
Oh, my God.
This is just a decision.
Oh, wait, I've read it wrong. Wait a minute, I need my glasses.
Nice try.
Yep, but I'm on the next one. Okay. This is, we're going to make a decision. We have finished our discussion, we closed the hearing, and we have a decision. We had asked for a decision to be drafted for us. We have it, and we would need it read so that we can vote on it.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So in your packets, there are two versions. There was an original version that went out to you in your packet. There's also this version that's been revised.
Right.
And the reason for the revision is, I can articulate at the podium, or I can just describe to you. At the last meeting, you indicated that the site plan needs some amendments. It referred to the property line and the parking, the distance to which. And so in doing so, they've provided this revised plan. We've reviewed it, it looks great. But they've amended the title block, and so part of the revised decision just indicates that revision to the title block. And then we made a clarification error on the dwelling, the affordable dwelling unit. As you may remember, at the last meeting, there was, we had initially thought the dwelling, the affordable dwelling unit was going to be above the garage, but it can be anywhere on the property. So we just wanted to make those clarifying remarks in the decision.
Excellent.
Just recommend that you...
I think the one that we'll be reading says at the top, revised 2A22.
Correct.
Right, okay. Bob, are you willing?
Uh, sure.
Thanks.
Get this off so people can hear me. Draft revised on February 8, 2022. February 8, 2022. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Nick Marioni of Marioni Realty LLC for the construction of a one-bedroom rental dwelling unit above an existing garage located at 462 T-Ticket Highway, Route 28, under Section 24012.2. Site plan review of the zoning bylaw, the plan entitled Site Plan, existing condition, or Site Plan for number 462 T-Ticket Highway, prepared for valued home improvement in Falmouth. Scale 1 inch equals 10 feet. Dated November 17, 2021. Revised February 4, 2022. Prepared by Falmouth Engineering with the following findings. The applicant is proposing to build a one-bedroom rental dwelling unit above an existing garage with a total of five parking spaces located at 462 T-Ticket Highway, Route 28. Okay, okay, one...
One of the units.
One of the units will be an affordable dwelling unit as required in Section 246.6 and defined in Section 243.3 of the zoning bylaw. The 11,412-square-foot parcel with 80 feet of frontage along T-Ticket Highway created through an A&R endorsement by the planning board in 1967 is located in the General Residence GR zoning district in the Coastal Pond, Great Pond overlay district. According to Section 240112.2B, the current minimum lot dimensions shall not apply to any residential lot shown on a plan endorsed by the planning board as of April 2, 1984, if the lot conforms to the bylaw requirements on that date. Therefore, considering the lot was created in 1967 and the minimum dimensions were met at that time, there are no current lot area width or frontage issues related to the site plan approval with this project, with this proposal. The addition of the one-bedroom dwelling unit to a property already containing a two-family structure is allowable in the general residence district as a multifamily use, which is defined as any combination of dwellings as defined on a single lot resulting in three or more dwelling units. The property has an existing five-bedroom septic system that will accommodate this proposed additional dwelling unit. The Town of Falmouth Engineering Division helped Department and Zoning Board of Fields review and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed all comments. The planning board's review does not include building code review, and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The planning board considered the above- referenced referrals and the applicant's response in this matter. The board will condition its decision accordingly. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 24012.2 of the zoning bylaw. Waivers. Section 24014.3B, landscape plan required to waive the landscape plan submittal requirement. Conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 242.1C2 of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property above its or public rights of way. Three, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance. Four, a deed restriction covenant or other suitable instrument acceptable to and enforceable by the town shall be recorded with the land records at the Bonsable County Registry of Deeds that restricts the leasing of one of the units on the property to households with an income 80% or less of the Bonsable County area median income, adjusted for household size as determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, or other acceptable method to the board, and further at a rent not to exceed 30% of said median income. Five, the applicant shall engage a third-party monitoring agent for the marketing, rental, and future monitoring of the affordable dwelling unit to ensure it can be added to the town's subsidized housing inventory, SHI, as a local action unit under the local initiative program. This affordability restriction shall run with the land and remain in effect in perpetuity. The request to have the unit be added to the town's subsidized housing inventory, SHI, must be submitted by the applicant or they're designated to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development with a copy sent to the Town of Falmouth Housing Coordinator.
Thank you. A second?
A second, but I have a question.
Okay.
In the paragraph where there's the red that's in brackets...
At least one unit?
Is that supposed to be in or out?
That's supposed to be in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I looked at it as a strike through, so...
Yeah, I know, and I couldn't tell.
Read it again.
Okay. So that's the, in the findings? You're talking about the fourth one?
No, no, I'm talking about...
No, it begins at any combination of dwellings as defined on a single lot, resulting in three or more dwelling units, at least one of the units being affordable.
It was on the first page.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it's the first finding, because there's also one...
Yeah, there's one in the findings, but it's not as explicit as this.
Okay.
So with that correction added in, I will second the motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. We had talked at the last meeting, and I had forgotten to add it, but we may want to add, prior to the occupancy permit, this deed restriction gets filed.
I thought I heard him say that.
I thought you said that, number five, under the conditions.
I don't recall that wording.
Request to have the unit added to the, to the SHI. The final...
But before occupancy permit.
It doesn't say before occupancy.
Yeah, before occupancy.
So I would suggest that we do prior to, prior to an occupancy permit, in number four, prior to an occupancy permit, comma, a deed restriction covenant, et cetera, shall be provided to the, to the board.
Okay.
Okay, with those two amendments then.
I got a question.
Paul?
Yeah, this is a motion to approve the construction. This has been constructed already.
Oh, not really.
Part of it has.
It's a garage, they're making it an apartment.
They're making a couple of changes.
But it's built, and it's been built already.
No, the exterior is all there. There's no exterior change, but there are interior changes to make it a one-bedroom above the garage.
Correct.
Construction.
Correct.
It's just interior construction.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah, but what you remembered is the outside doesn't change. All right, are we, do we have a, any further discussion? Okay, do we approve? John?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven approved. Thank you, and please let Mr. Marioni know that.
I will.
If he's not, he's here. Okay, great, thank you. Good project. Okay, now, on our agenda, a public meeting. And the first thing that we're going to hear is the applicant has Milton Floors Incorporated a site plan review application to raise and rebuild an existing office residential building at the rear of the above- referenced property and construct a two-story mixed-use building consisting of two residential units and office space located at 231 T-Ticket Highway. Paul?
Notice of this public hearing was published on 1/21/22, and 13 of it has been notified by regular mail.
Okay. Speaking for the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Is it all right if I remove my mask to speak? It's, I...
Yeah, would you please?
I mumble under the best of circumstances. So I think for everyone's sake, it's best if I, if I don't have the mask on right now. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant, Milton Carnavale, the owner of Milton's Floors, Inc. He's the owner of 231 T-Ticket Highway, the property that's before you this evening. And we are here tonight for a special, sorry, site plan review as he's proposing to raise and rebuild the existing rear structure on the lot. This is a replacement of an existing duplex in the same footprint. The only real change is the addition of a second floor. Currently, there's a large commercial building at the front of the lot and a duplex at the back. We're here for site plan review because we are adding more than 500 square feet. So under 24012.2B1, it's going to take me a long time to get used to these things. 12.2B1, we're here tonight for that reason. This property is 19,920, 290 square feet, my apologies, existing lot coverage by structures 35.31, under the 40% that's allowed. The proposed improvement simply expands the existing units upwards, not laterally. Does not add to the required parking. We are seeking to improve the parking configuration. It's not laid out, it's simply a blacktop surface that has been used in this manner for, my best guess is about 60 years since these properties were built in 1960 and 66 respectively. Perhaps surprisingly, the building, the rear building does comply with setback requirements despite appearing otherwise. It's only nine feet from the side yard line and 8.1 feet from the rear line. However, under 24011.4A2A, in the B2 zoning district where 30% or more of the lot area is covered by buildings in existence as of April 1979, there is no side or rear yard setback required other than a few specific ones, which this is not one of. The front building was built in approximately 1966, and the rear building was built in 1960. So that building, despite being within the 10-foot normal setback, is actually conforming in this regard. So that's, that's the gist of the presentation. I have Tom Bunker here with me this evening. Would be happy to address any questions that the board might have. But I think it's a relatively straightforward project, hopefully.
Jeb, did you want to speak for the planning department on this?
I certainly can. So when we first received the application, and Kevin, you know, got to it a little bit, we noticed that the parking calculations on that sheet were met. And so there's some, I guess, healthy debate on if the applicant needs to meet that requirement that's laid out. So for the record, total space is required, indicated on the plan is 23 and 1/2. I believe that the applicant is proposing 16 on the site. So that's something for the board to weigh in on. Additionally, and most of this is parking and circulation related, additionally, there's some parking in the front setback, which under, I don't know the exact reference in the zoning bylaw, but I will get it. It's only allowable via special permit by the planning board to have parking in the front setback. Additionally, referrals that we received indicated issue with the clearance between the two buildings. So Building A and Building B, that front part of Building B, it's only at 12 feet, 3 inches at this point. So the engineering division flagged that, indicated that that really should be wider than that, should be a 24-foot clearance, because the whole parcel's essentially parking. And then, you know, lastly, it was just the issue with the accessible parking spaces, which are located in the southwest portion of the parcel. There appears to be a potential issue with maneuverability for those two accessible parking, or at least one of the accessible lot parking spaces in the adjacent parking spot. So parking number six and parking spot number five. So very briefly, that's, those are sort of our initial comments. Not sure if I noted it, but you may have. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. So again, there's just some, some debate on whether or not, you know, they would seek relief from the ZBA. But again, that's, I think, just going on in the background, if you will.
Okay. Jim?
That decision, that question's really important. Because we're doing this on site plan review, and we're told that it is our job to do because it fits the, it's not a non-conforming, that it's conforming, and then now you're saying it is non-conforming. And if that's the case, it belongs in front of ZBA and not here. I'm a little confused on what's going on here.
If I can speak to that, Mr. Fox, I think that would be, we would be before you regardless because we're adding more than 500 square feet.
Right.
If the building commissioner determines that this requires a special permit, we'd have to go to ZBA for relief there. I spoke with Aladio prior to his departure. He didn't feel as though this required a special permit. And I spoke with Gary Street today, and he seemed to, as we talked through it, he seemed to agree with my assessment. I haven't presented it to him for a formal designation yet as to whether or not he thinks it would require a special permit. But I can speak real quickly to the other issues as well, if you'd like, that Jed brought up. But I think that we would be, we would be before you for site plan review regardless as to whether or not we need a special permit. we need a special permit because of the addition of more than 500 square feet.
But the parking, what I'm getting at is a pre-existing, we... it's not our job if the square footage and the parking needed, if it didn't meet it, if it was pre-existing, they have the right to continue with it.
Mm-hmm.
But, so you're blending the two things together here. I'm not clear on that.
But they're adding to it. It seems to me, yes, part of it's pre-existing, but the second story isn't, right?
Sure, but I don't believe that-
So you're adding apartments upstairs that will have residence in it that adds to the parking requirement.
There's existing, it's an existing duplex there. The size of the unit is just being expanded.
So it's still the same amount of units?
So I don't believe that we're changing the parking requirements.
That's your argument, okay.
So, you know, the setback between the building is the existing setback between the building that's been there since 1966. Likewise, the parking on the lot, in the front yard and throughout the lot, is how it's been since that time. Our idea here was to try to codify it in some way, make it an actual parking lot with defined areas. We thought that laying out the parking horizontally in the front, actually vertically in this case, made more sense than people backing, pulling straight in, which is what I've done when I've gone to Settles Glass that used to be there, and then you end up backing out onto 28. So I think that showing it this way is actually an improvement over the existing. But I don't believe that there's any increase to the parking requirements based on what we're doing. And again, we're here simply because we're hitting the trigger of adding more than 500 square feet for something other than a single-family residence.
Could you explain how the parking, but you're still planning to put parking in front?
It is, but I think rather than cars pulling directly in, facing the building, which is how I think it's been done over the years, and then backing out onto 28, this at least has it in a way that they're not backing onto 28 while not eliminating an already non-conforming parking situation.
Pat, did I understand you to say that you are going to raise that smaller building?
R-A-Z-E, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
And once you raise it, don't you have to come under new requirements?
I don't believe so. I think that because it's, because it's, the setbacks to that building are not actually non-conforming based on that provision in the bylaw. If it was non-conforming, we'd need to seek a special permit. But I believe that they're allowed to rebuild it in its existing condition because it doesn't, again, we're not changing the parking requirements, and the setback isn't considered non-conforming based on that provision.
Okay, well, I've got another concern, too. Because if you do raise it, you certainly can give greater distance.
More space there, yeah.
That, okay. And I've always been told that once you raise something, you now have to come under a current building code. But there's something else, too. See that little mark there that says overhead door on the building? That's a loading dock. Do they intend to close it up? Or do they intend to continue to use it as a loading dock?
That area shows a turnaround over there, so they'd still have the ability to have trucks over in that area.
And how do they do that with all the parking there? That, I pulled in next door today, and I was looking like this, saying, "I can't believe that there's enough room there for parking and for a loading dock, for trucks delivering in there to maneuver around." I've got a big problem with that, Kevin.
Ms. Clifford, I would simply say that, again, we're trying to codify the parking on site. We're not adding to the requirement. So right now, it's an existing blacktop lot that has no parking laid out at all. We're not increasing the parking needs. We're trying to improve what's there.
But we're also being told that the requirement is 24 parking spaces, and you're providing for 16 parking spaces, and you're adding two apartments that have never been there before, as far as I know.
No, there wasn't an existing duplex.
They've been there.
Mm-hmm.
All right, but then there are offices. Were they there, too?
There was, there's a small room in the front that's been used as an office.
Now we're looking at a couple of offices, I think.
I believe it's one office just has a stairway in it.
Up and down?
Yeah.
Okay.
720 square feet.
We're enlarging the capacity, is my point. And reducing the parking. And you're still going to need a loading dock there? You're going to be needing the flooring company?
But we're not, we're not reducing the parking because it's the same amount of parking that has been required. It's, I think the math was just never done as part of a site plan review. This is how it's, you know, we're not, we're not proposing to reduce the parking. This is just what actually lays out on the site.
Okay, well, my question is that I'd like to have the answer to is if you're going to raise the building, do you now have to comply with the current zoning, which then would require greater spacing, as engineering is pointing out, between the two buildings? Instead of the, what is it? I've got to put my eyes on to read it.
12.
12 feet, something.
12 feet, it looks like.
12 feet, 3 inches. And it should be 24 feet. So essentially double what is currently there, which could be accomplished by taking away the place labeled office.
I actually don't think that would get you to 24 because you'd still have the corner.
Yeah.
Okay, whatever.
I think, I don't think it would improve it by much.
Understand what I'm saying.
Sure, sure.
Because you'd be raising the building and rebuilding it, do you now have to comply with current zoning and building requirements? That's my question.
It's, my understanding is whereas it's not strictly a commercial building, that wouldn't be the case. But I wouldn't be able to say much more than that in this moment.
No, I know. It goes with, to when you were demolishing a house. People kept a corner there.
Mm-hmm. And I mean, and if, if the idea was that he, in order to maintain the existing footprint, he couldn't raise it entirely but had to maintain a portion of it, I'm certain that's what he would do.
Is it being built on the same foundation?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I think there was a basement indicated under, if I recall, by the drawings.
Paul knows.
I have two questions. One is the application says this is 231 T-Ticket Highway. The building shows a 229 T-Ticket Highway, and the small building shows 225. I was a little confused by that. Might be able to clarify that at some point in time. And secondly, it's not clear which buildings are going to be raised here because the small office building on the south side is in poor condition. And it doesn't say it's going to be removed. And the next building, I'm not sure. The next one says it's just going to add something up on it. So I was a little confused as to what's going on.
So the southern building shown here, the labeled building-
Nice, explain that.
Yeah. The southern building, Building B here, is these, these three blocks. This is the building that's to be remodeled.
All three sections?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's not clear.
My apologies, Mr. Dryer. I thought the-
Because the left building says construct second floor on existing building. So it's not going to be removed. So, I mean-
Confused.
I'm very confused with this.
I was, I was of the impression that it was to be taken down and rebuilt, given the, given the condition of the existing building. I can clarify with our client, he's not here this evening, whether or not they're going to maintain either the foundation or some portion of that building. My understanding had been that it was, you know, effectively to be raised, R-A-Z, and rebuilt, and within the exact same footprint.
Kevin, we've got some labels on here. There's Building A, Building B, and then there's something that appears to be a building that isn't labeled, that's tiny, that's-
I think that's handicap turnaround. That's part of the handicap spot.
What, this, right, that?
That's the space for this handicap spot there, so the door doesn't open. That's, that's, make, this is the handicap spot. That's what, that's how you get in.
Oh, okay.
This is all one handicap spot.
So this is completely paved. No area to be planted and landscaped.
Is it the hatching area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a requirement for van parking. Accessible parking for a van needs to have a wide-open area where that's just painted to allow for someone to come out of the van.
Thank you. That marking isn't indicated in the legend.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the plans I see, it talks about the basement and the foundation to be existing and being rebuilt on. That's, at least, that's what it calls it existing. Yet I stood behind this building, looking in from the ground, and it was crumbling. The foundation was falling apart. You could look right in. So are you using it again, or are you building a new one?
But I mean, I think that's been established as a question we need to, we need to get an answer for, and I don't, I don't have that answer.
In the southwest corner, this is before, I was looking at this building another time.
So-
Right there. I thought I could stand on the neighbor's property and stick my arm right into the basement because it was all crumbling and falling apart. Am I wrong? But the plan doesn't seem to show that. It shows it as being existing and we're building on top of it, are we? I don't know. I'm confused.
I mean, I think we've established that as a question that we need to provide you guys with an answer with. I just, I don't have that information right now.
Kevin, I have a question. The, the parking situation that you say is, you know, it just exists, it's been here for years. Was, was there some sort of approval on that? Or was that legal at the time that you started that? How did that happen?
Again, this, I mean, this was built in 1960 and 1966 respectively, based on the assessors' records. I'm not aware of any site plan review decisions from that time. Presumably, it would have been built pursuant to a building permit and had gone through the normal permitting routes at that time. I don't know what they were. So I think that we'd consider this a pre-existing situation, which is what we're doing.
Well, that would go to the ZBA?
That's if we're altering a non-conforming structure or use, but we're not changing the use or, and the structure itself isn't non-conforming.
And you couldn't find anywhere else on the lot to, to find more parking?
I don't think so.
Just, I'm going to follow up my same line, questioning. There's a pretty serious retaining wall that I see here, but it ends before it gets to the corner of the building. That building's crumbling and falling it down into the next lot. It looks like to me that there would be have to be some kind of retaining wall or structure because the drop-off in height is substantial.
Yeah, it's significant.
I mean, I... I just, I thought, actually, I thought if this was going to be, that the retaining wall would be continued all the way down around the building. But the building's basically going to, I mean, if you filled it in and made it a slab, I just, I just question how you do that. We're, we are doing site plan review, right?
I would certainly defer to Mr. Bunker on that.
I'd like to hear his thoughts.
Retaining wall, he's saying it's ending here rather than coming down to the corner of the building.
Well, we're just showing the existing retaining wall. When we put the, you know, did our drawings, I don't think we had, I mean, we had architectural drawings, which just showed that there was going to be the second floor added to it. And I think that was perhaps before a structural engineer looked at it, and we didn't get revised plans. So I'm not, I'm not sure of it myself, but if it's that bad, then it probably will be, as Kevin said, perhaps more of a raise and replace. As far as the retaining wall, that's just the existing retaining wall.
Right, but the existing retaining wall does not go all the way to the width of the building. And when I was at the site, it looked like the building basement was actually part, had become the retaining wall for that corner of the site.
I'd have to check.
And you're not proposing extending that retaining wall, just leaving it there and building up from the ground up? Or are you taking the basement wall down and rebuilding it or not? That's, that's probably a fundamental question here.
Well, it's a fundamental question, and I, you know, I don't know if the, the results of a structural engineer looking at it. I haven't been inside of it.
I don't see how that pertains to us, though. That's a building.
Well, it's a site plan.
Well, it's a site plan, but we're dealing with parking, access, and landscaping. We're not dealing with the construction of buildings.
Well, and he's already-
The retaining wall is part of the site plan?
Yeah, it's there.
Kevin's already taking that as a question, but I think we should move on. You have the, the planning board, the planning department staff report, right?
Yeah, we received that this afternoon.
Yeah, so there are questions here about no stormwater management. Information was provided, no proposed grading, site work is minimal. So that you have that and can respond to that in a subsequent meeting?
It was all, it's all, again, all existing. There are no changes to the grading, the drainage. It's all existing.
Well, existing doesn't make it approvable. It just says it's there. It might need to be changed. If there's no stormwater management and the drainage is dripping off the back end of the property, that's not a great situation.
We'll take a look.
I think you might need time to, to look at this report and respond to it.
Well, like I said, we received it this afternoon, so we haven't had much of a chance to process.
I didn't understand that. Okay, so...
That said, I think that typically when we see stormwater management reports and calculations, it's when there's an increase in the impervious surface or a significant change in the grading or the structure. I think typically we haven't seen that requirement for situations where we're making, in the grand scheme of a site, you know, not, we're not making changes to the grading or the drainage. So I think that's probably why it wasn't prepared initially. If that's going to be the requirement moving forward, that's fine. We just didn't prepare it based on that.
Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I guess it would be the same comment on the, on the parking is, I think the board would need to know whether or not there's an existing issue with drainage on the site now. Without that information, I'm not sure that they can make a proper determination as to whether or not there'll be a future one. And the same goes for the parking. I guess the, the open question here is, is that shortage okay? Will there ever be an issue with the site being, Building A and its use, and the timing of that parking with respect to the Building B uses? And will they ever conflict to a point where there wouldn't be adequate parking for, say, the dwelling units on site? So those are significant open questions I think that we'd consider.
Pat? This happened in 1966. We were giving permits at that point in time, I think. So you can say it's pre-existing, non-conforming, but it did become, was it permitted for something that then, it just got used in a different way? And now we're calling it pre-existing, non-conforming because nobody caught it.
Well, I would say that a structure becomes pre-existing, non-conforming, legally pre-existing, non-conforming after 10, after 10 years, even without the benefit of a building permit, and after six years with the benefit of a building permit. So I think regardless, it would be considered a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming-
Okay.
-situation. I think that... We can certainly provide you with some additional information. The board's made clear some questions. Jed, I guess my question is, when it comes to this pre-existing question, who is the ultimate determinant of that? Should I speak with Mr. Street at the building department? See if, in his capacity as the acting, acting commissioner? And see if we can obtain a determination from him? I just want to make sure we have a path to address it.
Sure, that's my understanding.
Okay. Yeah, then I'll, then I'll try to speak with Mr. Street and have something in writing from him as to whether or not that would require further relief,
in writing from him as to whether or not that would require further relief either from this board or from zoning board if there's no change in the parking requirements.
And Jed, did you have questions about the curb cuts?
Well, so there were some issues, as, as you'll see in the engineering, in, uh, report regarding the curb cuts. So there appear to be, I believe there are two on site now, um, and they're quite large. Uh, and so I, the engineering division just wanted to, to get a measurement of the proposed sizes of those curb cuts. And I, I believe, um, another issue could be the, the ability for someone to actually turn a vehicle, although you're right, Kevin, in terms of it being better than backing out onto twenty-eight, that front parking, we would need to, I would think the board would wanna see the ability for a car to actually make that turn and get into a parking spot, uh, if they so desire to do so. So for example, the top curb cut and the bottom curb cut, if a car were coming in a certain direction, if they could make that turn to safely get into that parking spot. And then also maneuver out of it, uh, because parking spot number one and three are somewhat close to the building. Um, and so they may be challenged to get out of that parking spot safely.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, where are the dumpsters for trash removal on this?
Yeah, that we, uh, did, uh, did not include.
Well, how are they gonna do it?
Well, we'll show it.
Okay, so I guess you'll be working with...
Moving back.
With Jed, and do you wanna come back at our next meeting, or do you wanna put it further off? The next meeting is February twenty-second. What do you think?
Uh, what's the requirement for filing ahead of the meeting?
Well, it would be the Thursday before the Tuesday, so that would be like, um...
So a week from, a week from Thursday?
Right.
I think, as much as I would very much like to be here at the next meeting, I, I think, uh, it might be tight timeframe for us to get you the materials in a timely manner and then to have any further reports back from town staff. So I think in fairness to our team and to the town, uh, it's probably best to go two meetings out. And my applicant is probably quite mad at me for saying that, but I think it's more realistic.
Great, so the first meeting in March.
Then we're running into a time.
Yeah, how's our timeframe?
Well, it makes it really tight.
Yeah.
I think you have until April for a decision.
Yep, April four.
But our last meeting to work on this is March twenty-ninth. That's our last meeting to discuss it.
It could be they'll resolve, they'll be ready next time, have a decision on the twenty-ninth. So we'll go, um, with the second Tuesday in March.
For the record, that's March eighth.
Look, just to say something positive and not leave you without anything, um, it looks as if, from the elevation, that the building's gonna be improved.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, that'll be good.
It's a low bar, it's a low bar to cross.
You gotta go look in the building and take that comment in this situation. When's the last time that building was occupied?
Uh, not that long ago. They, they, the prior owner actually started making some renovations and then stopped at the time of the sale, uh, which wasn't that long, it was about a year ago.
How long?
The, the, the sale was about a year ago.
No, I, I know, but actually...
I think, I think the renovation started about a year and a half, probably. When they go to the, I'm not quite sure.
Sure, there's some occupants in it.
Yeah, right. It looked pretty rough to me.
It's going to get better.
And collapsing. I, I actually thought that the back wall was falling down and, and ready to go into the neighbor's site.
I've been to the site. I have, I can't just say I've been to the backside of that, of that property, but I've been, I've certainly been to the site.
Well, I, I think I, I misread, when you walk along the back wall, you think the retaining wall's the property line, but there's actually more property there. So I was a little bit thinking that I was standing on the property line and reaching in, and, and I wasn't. There looks like to be four or five feet.
Yeah, it's actually, from the, from the back of the, uh, back of the structure, it's about, uh, nine feet, eight, eight point one feet, I think.
Are we all set? John?
Yep.
I'd just like to have them address the number of employees when they come back.
Okay. Any other final things that we want to have looked at before early March? I guess we're all set. Thank you. See you then.
Wonderful.
March eighth.
March eighth. Okay, next on our agenda, the applicant is the Darmel, Darmel Corporation, site plan review application to demolish and remove an existing single-family home and detached garage and to construct three duplex apartment buildings located at four twenty-four East Falmouth Highway.
I'm gonna recuse myself, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, John. Oh, notice?
Public notice for this meeting was published on one twenty-one, twenty-two, and nineteen of others were notified by regular mail.
Okay, Kevin, you were here.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Kevin Clower. Uh, I'm also here again with Tom Bunker of BSS Design. Uh, we are representing the applicant, Darmel Corp., uh, property known as Bishop's Corner, which is located at four twenty-four East Falmouth Highway.
Excuse me, the name again?
Darmel.
No, Fish's, what corner?
Bishop's Corner.
Bishop's Corner.
That's how I've heard it referred to.
Throughout all my life, I don't think I ever heard that. We used to call it four-way.
Well, three, three, uh, there's a few things. Previously, about, uh, three years ago, uh, this was, I believe, four or five parcels of land that were merged into one lot. Um, it was a little bit jumbled. Uh, so we merged them, um, about, about three years ago. Um, so it's one, one parcel now, uh, and we're seeking site plan review, uh, for three new residential duplexes at the property. It's a total of six, uh, new residences. Um, in addition to the current mixed-use, commercial and residential. Uh, if this is permitted, there'll be a total of nine residential units on the site. There's three in the building that houses bite on the go. Um, and that's allowed by special permit from the zoning board, uh, in the B-two zoning district. Uh, however, we still need your approval on this for the site plan aspect of that. Uh, currently we have two large commercial buildings, um, located on the eastern and northeastern corner of the property, and there's a mixed-use building, which is, again, that restaurant and three residential units above. Uh, this application does not affect those buildings at all. Uh, there's also an existing single-family residence with a detached garage at the northwest corner of the property, which is in pretty poor condition. Uh, both of those structures were, are to be removed. This is, uh, under section two forty-twelve dash two B-one, um, whereas we're adding more than five hundred square feet, uh, of, of residents and, uh, the requirement of, uh, twelve parking spaces, we require site plan review approval. This parcel's one point eight acres. Um, the five, uh, proposed, uh, the buildings have a combined footprint, um, for structure, lot coverage by structure of twenty point eight percent, which is well under the forty percent that's allowed. And the lot coverage, as proposed, of, uh, structure paving and parking is sixty-eight point one three percent, which is also below the seventy percent that's allowed. Uh, the existing dwelling, uh, that's there is non-conforming to the side yard setback. Uh, that's gonna be removed and improved so that, uh, all the proposed structures will be conforming. We're required to have twelve parking spaces based on, uh, this development. We're proposed, I believe, thirteen parking spaces. Um, we're improving the parking configuration. As I mentioned, we're eliminating existing non-conformity. I believe this is a significant and substantial improvement to the property. Uh, plus it's the addition of, of much-needed rental units in underserved market. Uh, I think we all know that the dearth of rental, uh, units that's available in town. Uh, and this proposed use would not adversely affect the business zone. Uh, I believe that this meets the requirements, uh, of site plan review and that this board can approve it. Uh, following your approval, we'll be seeking, uh, special permit from the zoning board. Your hopeful approval, I should say.
Kevin, did you get the, uh, planning department review?
Yes, that also came over this afternoon.
Today?
Yes.
Uh-huh. You didn't get a chance to glance at it?
I read it.
Oh, okay.
I can't say we've responded to it, but I've read it.
Thank you. Um...
I'll get a question for me.
Paul.
Hate to bring it up again, but, uh, the address again is four twelve, which is the restaurant in front. The existing building there is on Old Meeting House Road, and it looks like you fenced the entire area off so you cannot get into it from East Falmouth Highway. And the entrance appears to be coming in off Old Meeting House Road. Is that, am I correct in that?
Uh, yes, I believe that is correct, but the, uh, actual address of the parcel is four twenty-four East Falmouth Highway.
So you'd be changing the address, obviously.
They would, whatever the engineering department designates this as for an actual address, but the address of the parcel, the combined one point eight acre parcel is four twenty-four East Falmouth Highway. Um, I believe the engineering comments actually get into that and state that the engineering department's gonna go out there and, and actually, uh, renumber things pursuant to their standards, which is...
You can't get to it, T-Ticket, Freeway, you gotta come in.
I think they're gonna do four twenty-four and then, you know, building A or building B, uh, as opposed to having separate address numbers as it is right now. So as far as the assessors in the town is concerned, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Old Meeting House Road. And the other question, you got this fence?
It's East Falmouth Highway too, not T-Ticket.
Huh?
I think you might be misinterpreting, uh, one of the lines on here. I mean, there's, there's some fences, but those are for construction. When it's all done, you, you will be able to access East Falmouth Highway.
You can see the curb opening here. So...
Say that again?
So, I, I, I think, I think that perhaps Mr. Dreyer's interpreting this, this as a fence, and that's not actually the case.
Well, you're taking away the parking spaces by those.
But, but it's not a, it's, it's, it, that, that would be for construction purposes.
That seems to be, uh, overlooked.
It's, it's a temporary construction fence. They have to take out some of the pavement to put in the drainage. And so it's, it's not gonna be fenced off and separated ultimately.
Are any of these six apartments going to be affordable?
I don't think they're gonna be limited as affordable, but I expect that they'll rent in an affordable range. The affordable range is actually pretty high. Um, so I, I don't think they're looking to have them restricted as affordable, but I expect, fully expect it to be rented pretty close to an affordable price range.
Because of their location and size and so on, okay.
Is there a landscape plan?
Uh, I don't believe there's an, actually, an official landscape plan.
I don't see one.
There is on sheet three or four.
Oh, yeah, there is a landscape plan.
So there's not an issue with lot coverage or with setbacks?
Is there a table for lot coverage, landscaping?
I believe it's on the first page. Um, yep, if you look at the first page, um, proposing law coverage is seventeen point eight one, proposed is twenty point zero eight by structure. Uh, existing law coverage by structure paving and parking is fifty-nine point nine three.
Okay, it's in that, okay, it's not, it's that, those words there, okay? It's not a little table, it's the text, okay?
And proposed is sixty-eight point one, both, both being, uh, the law coverage by structure is well below the forty percent that's allowed. The law coverage by structure paving and parking is below the seventy percent that's allowed by right.
Isn't that usually put right near the block so you can see that called out separately and not blended in with, uh...
Uh, I think it depends on, on the engineer and the type of plans. Um, I think with, with a plan set like this, you should typically see a lot of the information on the front.
I got it there, so I guess I see it now. I have the same question about dumpsters. Too much in the plan, I can't see them.
Yep. Um, on, on page two, Mr. Fox, uh, at the rear, um, kind of the northern end, there's a proposed dumpster location shown.
Can you show me?
Right here, right, right where the mouse is here.
Yeah, I see it.
There it is.
Yep.
Got it?
That's for the whole site?
Okay.
That's where everybody?
There are others around, but this is the dumpster for these three buildings.
But aren't they usually shown in the landscaping plan where the trash things are? As it relates to parking places and everything?
I, I didn't, we can, we can look, I didn't, I didn't check to see where all the existing dumpsters are. I think they're on the back alley on the east side of building one.
He's saying that's for construction.
Not shown, but I think that's where they are.
Okay, yeah, it looks like there could be a lot of room from them there. That's an appropriate place.
They cost thirteen parking spaces. I think the, the problem, at least I am having, is there are a lot of lines on every one, so that you can't read. If I were driving through this lot now, from having been there, I know that I can drive from, uh, East Falmouth Highway all the way to the back of the lot and have to come back out here. It looks as if, in the new scheme, around the new buildings that we're looking at, you'll be able to access that from Meeting House Road. There'd be a single curb cut coming in to the thirteen parking spaces and be able to drive through that and around to where the dumpster is, and then, uh, come back toward East Falmouth Highway and exit again on Meeting House Road or maybe on, uh, East Falmouth Highway. Is that right?
Correct.
Right. So it's, uh, a lot of pavement here.
There's an existing curb cut, um, where, for the house, where, where we're showing the curb cut for the proposed duplexes.
Yeah.
And what this does is this allows, uh, traffic flow, you know, through the duplex area as well as through the regular parking area. Uh, I think it's an improvement to the traffic flow because theoretically you're putting cars on, on, on Old Meeting House Road further away from the intersection, which is typically preferred.
Right.
They're not closing the other curb cut, but I think it would be used less if you had other options. Um, and just in terms of the pavement, I just, I, I don't disagree that it is an increase in pavement, but it is still under the allowable threshold, uh, the by right threshold, actually, which is seventy percent.
Pavement.
Structures paving and parking.
Yeah. Does this landscape plan meet the requirements for the number of trees that you need along the street?
Frankly not sure of. I was, uh, putting this together with, uh, with the help of one of the applicants, and I, in the end, didn't, didn't count up all of the, uh, trees to make sure, but I'll, I'll check that.
Would you? Yeah. Particularly given the amount of pavement might be allowable, but it's undesirable, but given the amount of pavement, maybe just softening it. It is an improvement. Jim?
Would it be possible to get a landscaping plan that doesn't show all the underground septic system so you could show, see what is paved and what's green and, you know, what's green space so we can look at it without having to read every little detail and, and try to calculate it? Because most people look at the, the septic system there and don't realize that it's underground and you'd be driving over it, it's gonna have pavement over it, you know? It's kind of shown twice. It's shown at both levels.
But there's something else confusing on top of it. See that, um, uh, zigzag thing that goes among the buildings? See this?
That's a topographical line.
That landscape plan is gonna landscape, final grading, final paving, uh, we have the...
Subsurface systems, everything's on it.
Right. That's revision.
I think we can provide a simplified plan now, to, to, to your question, yes.
I think I have too much on to follow for my eyes. I'm having a hard time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For me? Kevin, do you, and, um, do you propose to sort of mark these parking spots that you're providing for the residential use so as to not allow uses along, in the, the remaining of the parcel to park there and sort of block access for them in any way?
Uh, I don't, I don't think it's been discussed. Um, oftentimes we see something like that as a condition of a, a, a special permit from the zoning board. If, if they were to condition, if you were to condition it, I'm sure, uh, we would. Um, I think that, you know, we see typically with, with a lot of these duplex, mixed-use complexes, that there is, um, oftentimes not a direct overlap in demands for parking. A lot of them require, you know, the businesses might require parking during the day, whereas the duplex, you know, the residences more often require them at night. Um, that's not a hard and fast rule, obviously, but that's something we typically do see. Um, but if either board felt that, felt strongly about it, I think, uh, the applicant would certainly consider it.
I think we're moving towards shared parking, particularly in mixed-use districts, and it's true, this didn't get into the new mixed-use district, but it could have, and that would be shared parking, which makes sense. Oh.
Well, look at the drawings here. That area's gonna be fenced off, so the only way to get in there is from Old Meeting House Road, so it's not gonna be a problem.
No, I, I, sir, I, I, Mr. Dreyer, I would just so, so, the area I think that you're seeing as, as fencing, um, is, is, is really a construction fencing for soil erosion control, which is, it's not, that's not, that's not proposed as a fence on the plan moving forward.
Not clear. There is access from...
Yeah, if you look at the landscape plan over here, there's no, there's no fence. It's, it's, uh, there is a fence on the backside of this, on the green area, uh, separating it from, from the commercial space, but this is a full access through...
It's all paved, and you can drive right through. That's what I had asked about. You can drive in, in the, um, what would that be, the most western entrance up there?
Uh, yeah, called the northwestern entrance.
Entrance. You can drive straight through, turn right, come around, and drive back out onto Old Meeting House Road right there.
And I think, um, if we didn't show that fencing, engineering would call it out for not showing the soil erosion control fencing. So...
Well, you don't have to show it on the finished landscape plan.
Well, no, so the finished landscape plan shows, shows a fence, an actual wood fence on the eastern side of the building six. Uh, but it's... But it doesn't show, I think what Mr. Driger was looking at is, if you look at, for instance, the layout plan on page two, it does show a soil erosion control fence around the work area, which is what would be required by engineering.
On the landscape plan I have here, it shows a proposed four-foot-high fence.
Yes, but I, it doesn't run across the parking area, the pavement.
What is that line that continues, that was parallel to the fence on the other, I think that's the confusion, is your construction fence or whatever is parallel to that?
So, the note here reads butt joint grind away top one inch of existing pavement and overlap with top coat of new pavement.
Okay, so that's a curb or something you got to cut off?
It's just, it's where the two paving areas are meeting.
I think that's.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Issue here is very important intersection, people in East Falmouth, they're really looking at that intersection. Dunkin' Donuts spent a lot of money fixing up their place, put a rock wall in front. When we reviewed CVS, they copied the design on East Falmouth, and they added the walls to accommodate Dunkin' Donuts, they did a nice job there. We also reviewed the Cumberland Farms area there, and we spent a lot of time trying to make that fit in very nicely, and they were very, very accommodating. So, this is a very important corner, and I think it's, it should be addressed in that manner, too. It seems to be complicated in my mind, how you're coming in, how you're coming out, and I think it has to be a little bit more directional so that it doesn't create a major problem.
So, I agree with all of your comments about the way this intersection's been improved over the years, and I think it's been a real benefit. I think that this applicant as well has made improvements to other portions of the property. What we're proposing now is an improvement to the rear portion of this lot, which is in pretty significant disrepair. We're not adding a new curb cut, I think we're improving traffic flow, and it's going to be, I think, a significant improvement to the condition of this intersection by the addition of these, of these units, because we're taking away a building that's really up on the property line. And, yep, we're also going to be removing some additional pavement, you know, and if you look at. That's on the very first page there. Yep, you know, we are improving this streetscape along here as well. So, I do, I do take that comment to heart, and I think that that is what the applicant's doing here, Mr. Driger, I think we are improving this in a pretty meaningful way.
I agree with you, looking at the renderings for the houses, the elevations, huge improvement, it's going to be much, much better. We'll tidy the whole thing up, it's definitely an improvement, and looking through the planning board review, you don't really have that many issues you need to respond to. Would you like to come back with whatever your responses are at our next meeting? At the end of the month, the twenty second?
I think that, I have to speak to my applicant, I don't think I'm going to be here on the twenty seventh, it's February vacation week.
Oh.
Can I, can I ask for a brief pause?
Sure.
So, I can step outside for half a second and just see how they want to proceed?
Yep, yep, go ahead. Take a break. Anybody need a break? Yeah, standing would be good.
It's going to be an early night, what are you doing? You have two more presentations, get with it.
Three hours to go.
Okay, meeting is open again.
I appreciate the board's indulgence there. I had to speak with my applicant. I am not going to be here on the twenty-second, but I think we're going to proceed. Tom can handle the meeting. I think it sounds like we're moving in a very positive direction, so I think we'd be happy with the twenty-second. Deborah Julie is the president of Darmel Corp. Her family has actually owned this property for sixty years now. They've been stewards of this property, and I think she'd like to just say a brief comment if she could.
Sure. Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. It's past my bedtime, so I'm going to make this really, really short. Can you hear me? I guess, okay. Yes, I am the DAR of Darmale. So we have owned this property, I inherited this property about three and a half years ago, and been working very hard to improve it. It's taken a long time. There's a lot of time, money, and I appreciate, I believe it was Mr. Dwyer's, comments about the other two, three corners, actually. The CVS, the bank, and also the golf station, golf station, sorry.
Cumberland.
Cumberland Farms. My uncle used to own the golf station there, so. I am not a bank, unfortunately. I'm not CVS, and I'm not Cumberland Farms, but I have been working very hard and trying to improve the property, little by little, but this back end is the final thing to do, to get the whole thing done. I've weighed commercial versus, because I've had comments about we need some more commercial space. I've weighed commercial versus housing. I think the housing is needed. The commercial is more lucrative, but the housing is needed. It's not going to, it's not going to affect, it's six, it's only six apartments, but it's my way of doing a little bit, and would like to keep that, that whole intersection. This board has been actually instrumental in revitalization of that four corners in East Falmouth. And little by little, I just want to do my part. I'm kind of the last corner there, and I guess someone said something about Bishop's Corner.
I refer to it as Bishop's. It was one of the, one of the decisions along the way, I referred to it as Bishop's.
Okay. It's actually, it's Bishop's Plaza.
Bishop's Plaza.
Because to be a corner, I would have to jump through some more hoops with the state. Okay, so, and Bishop is the youngest grandson, so that's why it's Bishop's Corner. Or Plaza, rather, excuse me. I had calls, and I get calls, I still get calls. This board approved three apartments above Bytes, and they were like this. They were gone. And that was over a year ago that they've been occupied, and I'm still getting calls. Somebody, we may nameless, keeps giving my phone number out. And I get calls from older people, and I think it's for them, and I'm finding it isn't. That their adult children have moved in with them, and it was time to go, so they were looking for places. I get calls from people who are managers of businesses in Falmouth, who don't live in Falmouth and want to be in Falmouth. I also get calls from, and this is a good one, from other employers looking for housing for their employees because they can't continue if they don't have the help and the help isn't readily available. So I guess that's my piece. If you want to know where dumpsters are, I can tell you. I can point them out. And I'm just trying to improve the corner, do our part. This is, and it is a family-owned. It's been family-owned. It's not owned by a corporation. It's not being leased by a big corporation or anything else. It's family-owned, and just trying to improve the area because East Falmouth's a great place.
East Falmouth is, on behalf of the town, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
For giving us some more housing. We need it desperately, you're right. And this is, you're making it much, much more attractive. Thank you very much.
Yes, that, that house has needs to come down. Thank you.
Rosa?
Rosa.
And we'll see you two weeks from now, or someone.
Yep, Tom, Tom will be here.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Moving on on our agenda, we're to the part where we're going to have some presentations. And I think our first presentation, our presenters have been waiting very patiently. Our first presentation is going to be, I believe, by Eric?
Matt.
Matt.
Yeah. No, I think we made a change just before the, just before the meeting. A request was made to switch the order, if that's okay. Matt, were you consulted on that change?
He was not. No, it was just a suggestion before the meeting. If, if you choose not to go in that direction, it's completely up to yourself. You just tell me which one you'd like to open.
No, let's, somebody.
Somebody.
Okay.
And these are, these are related kind of things. They're, they're environmental and energy presentations. And what Eric is going to talk about is denitrification septic systems, which came up as an issue in a project that's before us, so it's really very timely that we learn about them.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm Eric Jerkington, chairman of the Water Quality Management Committee for the last ten years. Kristen is our.
Kristen Rathgen of Scienceware, I'm consultant for the Water Quality Management Committee.
You need to take off your mask. We couldn't, that was totally mumbled.
Kristen Rathgen, Scienceware, I'm consultant for the Water Quality Management Committee.
So, thank you for, for the invitation. It's always, it's rare to find a group that's interested in being educated on innovative alternative nitrogen reduction systems. And, and you are, and it's important for the town that you are. I'm going to just give a little history lesson before we get into the details here, but back in the nineteen eighties, this town was developing like crazy, like five hundred houses a year for building permits. It was, it was nuts. And at that time, a couple of things were observed by a couple of very smart people. Ivan Valiella was the first one in Massachusetts, I believe, and probably in the country, to make the connection between houses, septic systems, and degradation of estuaries. He did that in Bourne, in a, in a subdivision up there, and it sort of became the gold standard for people figuring out what was happening. The other person is named Kerfoot. Bill Kerfoot, back then, figured out that not only was this wastewater from all these septic tanks going somewhere, it was going to the estuaries, and he figured out how you could figure out where it was coming from, how much of it was coming, and what you ought to do about it. And because of Bill Kerfoot, in nineteen eighty-eight, this town adopted the first bylaw that attempted to regulate nitrogen going into the estuaries. It way before MEP, way before DEP got interested, way before Title V, way before anything. Bill Kerfoot and Ivan Valiella basically invented everything that's going on now as far as wastewater and nitrogen, so we have some thanks for him.
Thank you for recognizing that, Eric.
And it's been almost forty years, and things, a lot has come down the pike since then. Obviously, the state and the feds got interested and got involved and got, started getting into the mandate mode. We ended up with the Mass Estuaries Project, which, which looked at all the estuaries that were impacted and, you know, using USGS numbers figured out where, where the nitrogen was coming from, where it was going, in a much more detailed way than Falmouth could do it back in nineteen eighty-eight. We, we were just sort of the pioneers. But now we have a whole different set of rules and regulations and structures and bylaws, and we know a lot more than we did. But there's, there's, there's a lot of ways that we've looked at in the last ten years of how to reduce the nitrogen. Now, we've looked at inlet openings, we've looked at eco toilets, we've looked at agriculture, we've looked at PRBs, we've looked at fertilizer reduction, and more than anything else, we've looked at IAs. I will call them Innovative Alternative Nitrogen Reduction Systems one more time, and then I'm going to call them IAs because we don't have time for, to repeat it that many times. But it's IAs. IAs are sort of the holy grail of nitrogen reduction. Knowing you're not going to sewer everywhere, which is quite clear, and back in the nineteen eighties, it was even more clear that Falmouth was not going to sewer everything. In fact, back then, Falmouth didn't even think it was going to sewer anything anymore. You know, we had just gone through a war about sewers in the early eighties, and nobody wanted to revisit it, so sewer-ing was not on the horizon. But IAs, even back in nineteen eighty-eight with this bylaw, were on the horizon. And so Falmouth in nineteen eighty-eight required IAs as, as one of the options for people to reduce the nitrogen going into the estuaries. But the state of the art, I wish I could say, has changed enormously since nineteen eighty-eight. It has not changed enormously since nineteen eighty-eight. And this, this presentation is to tell you what the state of the art really is about IAs in two thousand twenty-two. It's not, it's not a victory lap by any means, but Kristen, let's, let's walk them through what we found. We looked at all the IAs that have been installed in Falmouth since two thousand fifteen, which is pretty much when they started. It's over three hundred. And, and I think you'll be discouraged a little bit, but, but at least brought up to speed on what we found.
Okay. So what Eric basically said is that we know IAs are going to be a major piece of the puzzle to helping restore the estuaries, especially if you have the technology that can reduce the nitrogen to a meaningful impact. So what we did from the local perspective is we looked at what are the hurdles that we're facing and why we can't get widespread implementation of these to make them a practical alternative to sewer-ing. So we first looked at, from the state perspective. So Massachusetts City P requirements to get to general use. There's different tiers to get there. You have to go through piloting approval, provisional approval, and then three years of monitoring, or quarterly monitoring, before they'll even consider that. So what you have to do is you have to have fifty systems in the ground, and those, that once system fifty goes in, you have three years from then to monitor that system for three years. If it performs adequately, and all other forty-nine systems have, then they might consider it for general use approval. We looked at how other states are doing it, because Massachusetts, you hear from the vendors, it's a hard market to get into because it takes so long to get to general use. Virginia, for example, you only need to install twenty systems. You install them, you monitor them quarterly for one year, both affluent and affluent. The system has to meet the criteria of either fifty percent total nitrogen reduction, and that can be shown either through monitoring, or you can get an external, didn't you silence that before we started? Or you can go through external certification through the National Sanitation Foundation, which basically is six-month laboratory testing where they're showing that measurement.
The, the short answer is other states have a much lower threshold for approving these systems. Massachusetts has, with the toughest system, the toughest requirements in the country for approving systems, which is why darn few of them get approved.
So that NSF standard that I mentioned, there are twelve states that recognize that as a meaningful way to get to general use approval. So that's a standard for systems that treat up to fifteen hundred gallons per day. The states highlighted in blue are the states that recognize that. Six months of testing has to show fifty percent total nitrogen reduction.
Compared to fifty units and three years of testing.
Quarterly monitoring.
And quarterly monitoring.
So in Massachusetts, the systems that are currently approved specifically with nitrogen reduction credit associated with them, because there's different levels of general approval, we have six currently. The recirculating sand filter, Ruck, Microfast, Advantex, Septitec, and Singular.
It's worth noting, recirculating sand filters and rucks were both basically invented and implemented by two Falmouth people. The other three are from, from off Cape, or out of state even.
So what we did is we wanted to look at how the systems that have been installed in Falmouth are actually performing. So we went to the Barnstable County Septic Management Program, and I got data from the most recent five years, so the period from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty, just to see how recent performance was doing. Now, the county has on record that three hundred and three systems were installed in Falmouth, but the county says only two hundred and sixty-nine of those are active. So whether some have been upgraded, whether they've been removed because of sewer-ing initiatives, whatever their metric is, two hundred and sixty-nine of those are active. By law, the monitoring is supposed to be reported to the county. What the county gave me was data in that five-year period. Only a hundred and seventy-seven of that two hundred and sixty-nine systems had any kind of data reported in that five-year period, and it's very inconsistent. You may have one monitoring event reported, or you may have all quarters for all five years. So super inconsistent. This is a map that's basically showing where each of those two hundred and sixty-nine active systems are located within town, and if there was data associated with them, what their performance level is. So the red pins on here are showing systems that are installed outside of those MEP-defined watersheds, so the critically impaired watersheds. These are going to direct discharge or going somewhere like Sipewisset Marsh, which has not had a TMDL defined.
Now, you notice if they're outside an MEP watershed, it basically means the nitrogen isn't going into an estuary.
The light blue and green pins are different performance levels. So the general state requirement is that for the nitrogen reduction credits, they need to perform at or below nineteen milligrams per liter. So the blue ones, based on the data that's available, on average are performing to at least nineteen milligrams per liter. Green ones are doing better. They, on average, perform at or below twelve. The yellow ones are not meeting that standard, or there are ones that there wasn't data for, because remember, only a hundred and seventy-seven of those systems had some kind of data reported. This is just the distribution of the numbers and types of systems in their approval category by the state. So in Falmouth, the majority of the IAs that have been installed are the Microfasts, and those have the nitrogen reduction credit, so there are eighty-five of those. Singular makes up the second most that have been installed in town. So.
Here's where it gets concerning.
If we're looking at the specific systems, the number of systems and the percent of those installations that perform at those regulated levels. So for here, at or below nineteen milligrams per liter, there are fifty-seven individual systems in that two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty period that are performing at or below nineteen.
Understand that nineteen just means fifty percent in reduction. It's not a big, it's not the number we need, but it's, it's the number the state currently.
It's meeting their, their approval. So Nitro comes out on top with that, with a hundred percent. Of all three of those Nitro systems that are installed in town are making that requirement. Ruck does very well. You move down the list, see, remember, fast has, there's eighty-five fasts in town, and only twenty-two percent of them are ma, are meeting that nineteen milligram per liter average. In Falmouth, like Eric said, nineteen is only fifty percent removal. We know from the modeling that's been done and the TMDLs that have been set, we need to do better to have a meaningful impact in the estuary, to make it cost-effective and anywhere comparable to sewer-ing.
Here's the problem with putting in systems that only get to nineteen. You could take a watershed, like Oyster Pond, and you could make everybody in the watershed put in an IA that gets to nineteen, and you wouldn't get to your TMDL. It wouldn't be enough, so.
It wouldn't be enough with twelve, either.
So why bother? Well, we're coming to that.
Right. So we looked at that next tier of twelve, which is another recommendation that a lot of areas are looking at adopting a higher performing standard. So twenty-three individual systems, on average, are performing at or below twelve. Again, the, the order of systems doesn't really change. Nitro comes out on top. You have a couple of those fasts that are, on average, meeting that. So we set a superior bar of six milligrams per liter because there are a couple of technologies out there that can do that. Nitro is one of those. So one of those systems is performing at that superior level. One of the things to note with the Nitros is the other two systems that were installed in town were early systems, and their initial monitoring was high because there were some issues with the air pumps that got remedied right away, but there was outlier data that throws them out of that. So we've got four systems that are meeting that superior level.
Well, back up here, you've got four, but you notice if the Nitro, they're doing okay. I mean, as she just explained, one, one of them had a hiccup at the beginning, but what we're finding now is the Nitros are performing at the sixth level pretty consistently. The Ruck, like McGrath's system, has always been pretty good. The Fast, not very good. When you're trying to get to the sixth, basically, they aren't doing it.
So those of these three technologies, this is what all of the systems installed in Falmouth look like when you plot out that average data from that five-year period, just how variable their performance is. So with the Fast, with these two individual systems, they may be getting below the six milligrams per liter, but I know nothing about those residents, whether it's seasonal, how often it's occupied, what's actually going in that those systems are performing. So that just kind of shows how variable all these technologies are doing. Several years ago, the town partnered with Buzzards Bay Coalition for the IA demonstration project in West Falmouth Harbor. This was data that came from the Coalition. So they installed probably six different technologies. These were the major ones. Their project goal was to achieve at least twelve milligrams per liter or less or sixty-seven percent nitrogen, total nitrogen reduction. So they installed twenty-four systems total in that project. Only seven of those performed at or below the twelve milligrams. If you look at it from the percent removal, fourteen out of the twenty-four were achieving at least sixty-seven percent removal. So what we concluded from the data that we looked at, the recent data, that most of the systems with general use approval are not performing at their required level of nineteen milligrams per level, per liter, and they're not removing sufficient nitrogen to justify their cost. It's not a meaningful impact for the estuary to be spending on those technologies. The percentage of systems with general use approval that, on average, meet, again, the Ruck comes out on front, eighty-six percent of those systems are performing well. And you get down to the Fast and the Singular where those are not consistently performing well on a system-by-system basis. And as I mentioned, there are a couple of systems out there that we know from data in other parts of the Cape, other parts of the country, that are performing well, the Nitro and the Nitrex, but they don't have general use approval with the state.
Welcome to Massachusetts. This, this is what, what we've been, Paul knows, he's been coming to our meetings for a while. We've been banging our heads against the wall over this kind of stuff because, as you can see, the systems that work the best don't have general approval, and the ones that do the worst do.
So one of them.
Here's, here's the second part here, what these things cost.
So one of the next hurdles are sampling costs, O and M, all of those combined. So once you actually get to general use approval, you have your fifty systems in the ground, you have three solid years of data, and the state says you're great. You still have to have quarterly monitoring for the first year, and then you get put into a pool, and ten percent of those systems get monitored monthly. So you have at least one sampling per year if that's under a watershed permit, twice if it's under Title V. That's, again, assuming you have adequate performance. If not, you're back to quarterly monitoring until you have adequate performance. If you have general use approval, you have to have monthly physical inspections by a licensed plant operator, come and check your mechanical components. Make sure that the blower's running, the pump's running, the homeowner hasn't turned the system off for two years. If you meet that requirement, then you can reduce to once. Right now, the state does not allow for remote monitoring for compliance, so there's, they will not allow for total nitrogen compliance. Discussions with the state, they're starting to become open to the mechanical inspections, depending on the components of the system, but they are not moving forward with that yet, but they're starting to entertain that idea. So it's a significant cost to the homeowner. Wright Pierce produced a tech memo for a project in Pleasant Bay in two thousand twenty where they broke out some of those costs. So the projected capital cost for a system is about thirty-four thousand. In that first year, you have that extra monitoring component if you're general use, so we lumped that in with the capital cost. So your base cost for that is about thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. If you break that down for an annual basis over twenty years, the life expectancy of a system, your average homeowner is looking at about thirty-four hundred dollars a year to have an IA installed.
Well, installed and serviced and, and monitored and.
Yes.
And all the things that have to go with it. So it's, it's a lot of money, especially when you compare it to what the homeowner cost was for the homes in the Little Pond project. Their betterment was four hundred and thirty-five dollars a year, and if they refrained, refrained from watering their lawns and just used the minimum amount of water that the town bills them for, it was another four hundred and fifty. So it's under a thousand dollars a year for those folks. And, and for the person who puts in the IA, it's close to thirty-five hundred dollars a year. It's a big gap.
So.
Okay, this, this gets us back to the other issue, which is where we're sewer-ing and where we're not, or at least where the, where we're recommending sewer-ing, where we're not, because all, all of this is up to the selectmen and the town meeting and the voters and everybody else. But, but the, the plan that we have come up with and have been pursuing is based on these numbers. These are all the MEP numbers, looking at each estuary, and how much nitrogen is, removal is required to need, to bring that estuary to the level where it can function in a healthy manner. As you can see, most of the estuaries have fairly small numbers. The big numbers are in Little Pond, Grape Pond, Green Pond, and Waquah Bay, and Boynton. And so that's the area that the town's been focusing on in terms of sewer-ing for a couple of reasons. Reason number one, it's a huge target of nitrogen removal. And reason number two is the density. We've got lots of less than eight thousand square feet, eight thousand to ten thousand square feet. The red and the blue, those are the real dense neighborhoods. If you're building a sewer system, you want density because, you know, the pipes don't have to go as far as they would to reach a one- or two-acre lot neighborhood. So the, so there's two reasons to do the peninsulas. The third reason, of course, is those peninsulas are immediately adjacent to the estuaries. And whatever goes into the ground immediately adjacent to the estuaries gets to the estuaries first.
That way, yeah.
So there's three reasons why those particular peninsulas are the target area. So there's three reasons why those particular peninsulas are the target areas for sewer planning in this town. What, what you've seen so far, green area is the Little Pond area. What you're, what you're gonna see offered up in the next ten years is the purple. The T-Ticket area and the Acapescot area. Both of those are now in the planning process. We're gonna go to the town meeting in two thousand twenty-four with a package of, you know, sewer collection system, pipes to the plant, pipes from the plant to a discharge site. The, the whole package will come to town meeting in two thousand twenty-four for the purple area. In the future, again, looking at those previous two maps, we, we think we can deal with Boyn's Pond just by doing that pink area up by Route twenty-eight. Because Boyn's Pond is, next year is gonna be widened, the opening is gonna be widened. This is a project the town voted for in two thousand fourteen, it takes a little time to do these things. But it's going, it's going up to bid this year and hopefully the project will start. That will open up the entrance enough that there'll be so much more flushing. At least half of the nitrogen you have to remove is gonna be removed by that means alone. So like I say, the only part we would have to add would be the part up top. And then finally, you get to Waquay Bay, Matt and company have been educating for years and he likes to remember that we get to Waquay Bay. Those peninsulas clearly need to be done and they would be next in the scheme of things if the town continues to wanna fund these projects. Long after I'm gone. Long after we're all gone.
No, I'm still here.
She'll be here.
I'm still here. So this comes down back around to, John Waterbury came before you guys several weeks ago with the proposed bylaw, so this is just basically reviewing that.
Yeah, what, what, what we're thinking in terms of, for the places we aren't gonna sewer, and we know those, those west coast estuaries, the nitrogen level that you have to remove is small enough that, and they're far enough away from the plant, that it makes, it makes no sense to think about sewer-ing those areas. That's where IAs come in. We think in those areas, if we can get IAs to general approval that have sufficient nitrogen reduction, like down to six or at least below twelve, we can actually address those water bodies with IAs without sewer-ing. Bring that to the map up. Like in Fiddler's Cove, for example. If you put IAs in those houses, just the ones in, in the yellow there on Fiddler's Cove, you, you can get the TMDL that you need to get to without sewer-ing. West Falmouth, West Falmouth Harbor, you can just do the people on the edge here. You, you can bring the TMDL, you can reach your TMDL without sewer-ing. West End Harbor, you can reach it without sewer-ing. So tho- those estuaries, which, which are not in the sewer-ing plans ever, do have an option, but the option is contingent on IAs that work and that work to the level that we need them to work. And right now, as you've heard, the state of Massachusetts has not seen fit to approve any, do that, even though we know there are some that work.
What happened to Wild Harbor?
Wild, Wild Harbor is a sort of a mix. Part of it's sewered now.
Tiny part.
New Silver Beach. And the level of nitrogen that you need to remove is high enough that it would be more advantageous to do some sewer-ing there. The problem with that is it doesn't go to the main plant, it goes to a little plant in North Falmouth. And that little plant has just, DEP has just reduced the capacity of that little plant by fifty percent. So they've basically created an impossible situation and we're not gonna fight with them about it. You know, at some point, you just have to say, this, this can't be done under, under the existing rules.
There would be the potential to put IAs in these other water bodies, in these other watersheds, but not through IAs alone. Are they gonna meet the TMDL? So it's gonna be a combination of shellfish, looking at dredging, inlet widening, PRBs, all the things in the toolbox to get those where they need to go. These couple, we think we could get there with just the IAs alone.
That, that, that is our story and we thought it was important for the planning board to understand the roadblocks through the IAs and understand the hope of where we're going with sewers. And to answer any questions.
I really appreciate that you've done all this work and brought it to us, and I know it's late, but are you willing to take questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, John?
Yes, I just wanna summarize a little bit if I can, Eric. It, it appears that the state requirement is nineteen parts, I'm gonna say parts per million, that's probably not the right word, but nineteen parts. The Board of Health in Falmouth is requiring twelve parts. And for your purpose, you wanna see six parts or less.
We'd be happy with six, yeah.
And, and according to your data here, we have approximately twenty-five thousand homes in the town of Falmouth and currently four of them have IA systems that would meet your requirements. Four, four homes.
It's a little cheerier than that. The, the system that gets below six, they've actually installed about twenty-five of them on the Vineyard. They're, the.
Chubel Pond, Barnstable.
Over, over in Barnstable, the Three Bays Group, whoever they call themselves now, is installing twenty more in, in Barnstable. And, and the Coalition for Buzzards Bay is installing some there. So it, it's reasonable to think that we might get fifty of that system in the ground in the next couple of years. But that's the only one.
But right now, there's only four in the town of Falmouth.
Right.
That, that are helping to meet the needs.
Right.
So one of the reasons I ask you to make a presentation this evening because the planning board, we have bylaws that we've written and we're asked to enforce them or not enforce them in new subdivisions. And it doesn't appear that this, it's a great idea, but it doesn't appear that it's worked over time, over the last thirty-five years. We've only got about three hundred systems in the ground and it's just not solving the problem. But we'd like to try to, going forward, find a way to work with, with you guys to make something that will work properly. And when you're, my question is, you're, you're talking about the areas that are not gonna be sewored. Not West Falmouth Harbor, but you mentioned Fiddler's Cove and, and the other.
That's it.
Yes, so, so let, let's say that we put together a bylaw for the area and it gets approved. And there's maybe three hundred homes you're looking at eventually to get IAs in, existing homes. How, how are they gonna be monitored and how, what's the enforcement gonna be? Because even, let, let's say we put something together for Seaco Shores. There's, there's almost a thousand homes in Seaco Shores. Not that they would be done right away, but over time, how, how do, how would that get monitored and enforced that?
Seaco's is an example of a place where it wouldn't be worth it. It would, it would be cheaper to sewer than to require a thousand homes to put in.
Okay.
Thirty, thirty thousand dollars worth of IAs. What we would find ourselves doing is doing watershed permits for each of those estuaries individually. And in that watershed permit, you'd say everyone has to have an IA and you'd figure out how, who pays for it and all that. But you're right, it would have to have a whole town-run monitoring program. Basically, the DEP looks upon these IAs as little sewer plants and they, they want the town to be responsible. They don't want Harry Homeowner to be responsible because they know what happens with Harry Homeowner. He stops paying and the guy stops coming and the monitoring stops occurring and, and it, it, it's an impossible enforcement mechanism. Their, their position is if you're gonna do these things, it's gotta be a watershed permit, the town has to be in charge, and the town has to do the monitoring and contract. It, it can contract for all this stuff, it can contract for the monitoring and the, and the maintenance and, and all of that, but it has to be the responsible party. So that, that's another piece of the puzzle that.
Well, as, as a board, I think we would like to find a way to work together to, to have something that actually works for the town of Falmouth.
Sure. Yeah, well, we're, we're for that.
But first, it's unclear to me exactly what works. A lot of what was done and paid for, it's not being monitored, they're not doing the data, you don't really know what's happening, and several of them don't appear to be effective anyway. So it would seem to be money out the window.
In, in some respects, you could look at it that way. It certainly has, has not worked out the way it was intended.
Right, and how are people selecting the systems that have such a low, a success rate? Are they cheaper? I mean, what, most people seem to have, more people pick MicroFAST than anything else, but MicroFAST didn't do very well.
They're cheaper.
Much cheaper. And the one that's very expensive, is it Ruck?
Ruck, that, that's Mike McGrath's system. It's expensive, but it works.
What's the price differential?
I don't know, and we're gonna have to chase that around a little bit.
Eight to ten thousand.
Is it?
Per system, yes.
Per system, so it's the upfront cost, but the monitoring cost is the same no matter what you put in?
Well, I, I understand that, that the state's requirement is nineteen parts. That's really, really what has been going on for a long time. Just recently, the, the Board of Health has started to require twelve parts per million or less. And they can't tell you what system to, I, I'm familiar with this because I've installed forty, forty systems in the town of Falmouth. And, and I just put them in because they were required and I thought, all right, well, I just gotta put a system in, they, they all work the same, they work good, but that's not how it's turning out. So rather than having people that come in front of us spend a lot of money, that the town is not getting to get the benefit from it, we need to come up with a program, I think, to a system where it's gonna be effective for the applicant and for the town of Falmouth.
You say "we," this sounds very much to be.
Planning board, planning board.
Planning board. A very, it's a health issue, what?
You're right, it's more of a Board of Health jurisdiction as far as.
But we have the one that has the bylaw, if the subdivision has more than five units, you have to put one of these systems in, so that's why the "we" is.
Why it's here, yeah.
So could you address what the town of, is it Tisbury just?
Yeah, Tisbury. Yeah, the Board of Health in Tisbury just put a, put a rule in place around the, one of, one of the watersheds for, not Lagoon Pond, but the other pond, Tajmo. The watershed of Tajmo Pond, they put, they said, everybody in Tajmo Pond has to put in an IA system that gets twelve or better. Either when they sell the house, put an addition on the house, build a new house, I mean, they have three or four bills.
They use the Title V model.
Yeah, essentially, right.
Yeah.
Basically, all of these conditions, except what Falmouth is proposing, is a time trigger. After fifteen years, if you haven't met A through D, you have to put one in at the fifteen-year mark. So Tisbury didn't have that in theirs.
It's pretty radical when you think about it, because, because you're, you're basically saying to all those people in the watershed, you've gotta spend thirty, thirty-five thousand.
But you're saying that the backup that the town needs to put in, if you were to put in a bylaw like this, like Tisbury's and made these requirements, it would have to go hand-in-hand with the town commitment to monitor. Otherwise, it's ineffective.
That's right, the, the town would have to have an infrastructure in place or at least a contracted arrangement in place so that, right, the, the testing and the monitoring and the operational maintenance is guaranteed to happen.
Was it worthwhile to insist on, until we have such a thing? Should we continue to insist on IAs where we have been, although they're not working well?
That, that, that's up to you guys. I mean, you have, you have a bylaw that was written forty years ago. It was a state-of-the-art back then. It was written by the only people who knew what was going on. But, you know, you could revisit it and, and you might, you might find.
And I'm just thinking now of a very short-term interim between now and, and improvement. Do we then relax the requirement and wait until we can get a good one?
We recommend a Ruck, the one that we know works the best.
Works, right.
Would that be the only choice someone would have?
Well, that, that or the, the.
The Ruck isn't the best, there's another one, right?
Nitro.
Nitro.
It's not general use approval, it just means additional monitoring costs to the homeowner until it reaches general use approval.
How long does that take?
Well, it, it takes until they get fifty of them in the ground and the DEP looks at them for three years and decides they like them.
Three years of data past that. So.
That's, that's, that's the big handicap here, is getting something to general use approval.
And they won't take data from another state. It has to be Massachusetts data.
We need.
No, actually, they, they say they will take out-of-state data, we haven't seen that they ever did.
Oh.
Nitro hasn't been installed anywhere else besides Massachusetts. Because it was developed out on the Vineyard, so it's a very local system. So he has not expanded his market to other states.
I think we just need a more comprehensive program.
Yeah, we do.
Because having four systems in the town of Falmouth that are taking nitrates out of the, of the wastewater is ridiculous. After forty years.
Yeah.
We get one every ten years? I mean, it's, we have to have a better program for the, for the town.
Didn't make any progress whatsoever.
I think we should work in conjunction with their committee. They're gonna sewer certain areas and we should kind of, in my opinion, we should focus on the areas that aren't going to be sewored. And try, and try to put something together to, to work with the Sewering Committee. Like Mr. Waterbury's here, the areas that they're talking about, they're never gonna get sewored. But I, I think if we got around to it, we should do something more like Tisbury's gonna do in those areas, make it a requirement.
Well, what's the next step for us doing that?
I don't know.
I'd say we'd have to kind of form a little subcommittee of us to.
Form a subcommittee.
And I think, as so many other things, it's follow the money, I think people are gonna be shocked at the cost. And so we're gonna have to work somehow hand in glove with the town to share some of the cost to get these systems in and monitored as they're gonna have to be monitored.
You know, Pat is exactly right, the cost is gonna be a big issue. And we've, we've been thinking in terms of, how can the town subsidize this? You know, the West Falmouth project, we got money from EPA to give every one of those folks ten thousand dollars toward the cost of it. They liked that and they volunteered and they went ahead and did it. So I think the idea of either contributing toward the cost or actually buying the unit and saying, here, we're, we're, we're buying this unit and you're putting it in. And the town will make sure it gets monitored.
It would have to be coupled with an incentive program, but when you, when you read about how much houses cost nowadays, it's not that big a fraction of the cost of a new house.
Well, that's true, you know, twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars is the cost of a granite countertop.
And it would be rolled into the mortgage.
Did everyone who would like to volunteer to put one in at their house right now raise their hand? The twenty-five thousand plus the, the two thousand dollars a year forever?
That is the problem, isn't it, John?
Maintain it, test it, everybody raise their hand that wants to do that.
We'd have to talk it over at home.
This is really complex and, and, and thirty-five, forty years ago, when all this got put together, it had the best of intentions, but it hasn't worked. And I think that we need to find a way to improve on that.
Well, that's right.
And see if we can make it work.
I think Pat's right. I think what we really need to do, because it worked well before and we got Mr. Cott, so let's have a, a, a subcommittee of three, or, yeah, three. Two, and John, I guess you'll be one of them.
Okay, as he rolls his eyes.
Who else would like to or be willing to work on this and work with Eric? And I didn't catch your first name, Kristen. Kristen.
She's the brains of the outfit. She, she does all the work here, I just didn't.
Definitely Kristen. Who will work with them?
I'd like to say yes, but I just don't know what my time is going to be like. I really would like to.
Bill B. Willing?
Well, I'm, I can't volunteer him.
You can ask him. Wake him up when you get home.
Besides, he can get very, very intense about this, sometimes it's not a good thing.
Okay, so we need one, one more to work with them.
Something else that always gets looked past is we need to get to the state too. I mean, the state is such a roadblock on this stuff and nobody wants to, you know, change the state. We have a representative that lives here in Falmouth. I mean, he should be well-versed in all this and we should stop pushing him.
Oh, and we will, but let's do the part that we have more control over at the moment and have this committee get working and see if you couldn't get back to us reasonably by what, April? And work toward.
How about June?
June, okay. I don't have one more volunteer? Pam, thank you.
You're welcome.
You've got background in this stuff too, so.
Well, I mean, I worked at EPA.
EPA, right. Our engineer didn't volunteer, but he's on so many committees now. Okay, great, um, thank you.
Well, thank you, you know, we, we, we're all trying to make something happen here, like, like Matt says before, we're all buried. Like, like Matt says before, we're all buried. And, uh-
Well, I'm just thinking about the, the agenda. The planning board is lined up for itself, and we've got some things there, but we, the, it needs to be done. So we'll, we'll get going on it and hope for success. Is Tisbury the only town that's come close now?
They're the only ones that have actually mandated, even, you know, with these conditions, putting in, in an entire watershed-
Yeah.
IAs that work. And they're, you know, they're, they're quite focused. They, they love the Nitro. They, they've put enough of them in the ground, long enough, to be very comfortable with their performance. And, so basically, they're saying to people, "Put it in the Nitro." And, you know, if you can find another one that gets to 12, go ahead. But meanwhile-
Go with that, yeah.
And, you know, there, there is Nitrex, which is a very well-performing system, but nobody has ever put it in in Falmouth or the Vineyard. And there is what George Hoifelder calls a layer cake, which, which is something that he's invented, and that works, too. And that gets to the number you want to get to. So there, so there's three out there that we know get where we want to go. And the DEP has approved none of them for general use, or, or even, even anything but piling.
Yeah, but what, what does their approval do for you? You, you still have to, you can use them if you want to.
You just don't have to test and inspect as often.
It lowers your inspection fees.
Yeah.
You don't have to send a guy around every month to, to look at it.
I've got a question for you, Eric. The layer cake system, it, can that not be put in as an add-on to your standard Title V, and so it's less expensive?
All of these can be, are add-ons, or can be add-ons to Title V. Yes, layer cake can be, Nitro can be, Nitrex can be.
And the layer cake, I think, is less expensive and very effective, from what I'm understanding. Is that correct?
It's got a lot going for it.
Okay.
You need a larger footprint for your leach field for the layer.
Oh, yeah. You can't put it on a 5,000-square-foot lot, you know.
Yeah, the Nitro and the Nitrex are like little coffins. They're boxes that you can put a box down, whereas the other, the other one is like-
You bury your money.
So Eric, I have a question. Are you looking to coordinate with other Cape Cod communities to sort of make a consortium?
We, we, we do talk to them all. Pleasant Bay, in particular, is pursuing this in the same way we are, and coming up with the same problems that we're observing, that the DEP has, has become a roadblock. So they're, they're very keen on it. Mashpee, we're dealing, we, we, we're dealing with fairly often. Those are the two that are spending the most time on IAs.
I mean, I just, I just have never been able to get my head around this concept of each individual community doing their own thing without coordinating with each other. I mean, we don't live as an island, and it's the same concept of regionalization. You know, why not regionalize to do all of these projects that are so critically important?
I think the short answer is DEP looks upon the towns as the agents who are obliged to do this. You're welcome to talk to other people and to coordinate with them all you want, but unless it's a watershed that is shared by two towns, like Waco Bay, the state says, "It's your watershed, Falmouth. Your 14 watersheds that are impaired, you've got to deal with, you, Falmouth, have to deal with them."
All right.
It's so New England.
You're right, but it makes it much more complicated to get that number of entities to agree.
Well, you don't have to do all of them. I mean-
No, it would be the Cape Cod Commission that you'd work through, and they would try for that, but it takes longer. You know, we shouldn't wait for that. We would, you're right, but why wait on that?
I, I wouldn't suggest we wait at all. I think we ought to have done it.
Okay, so you three will get together and figure out a way to work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your agents.
I appreciate your perseverance tonight. Matt?
This presentation by-
My Matt is about solar readiness, not solar access.
I have it here.
And the interesting thing about it, he started out-
Go to page six, page five.
Okay.
Have a bylaw or something about solar readiness, and then discovered, oh, it's part of the stretch code. So we already have it. We're just not knowing it.
Does that work?
So this is so that we know it.
Right. Yes, okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Matt Patrick. I am a member of the Falmouth Energy Committee, and I'm also a member of, Falmouth's representative to the Cape Light Compact, and I'm here to, tonight, to talk to you about solar-ready provisions, okay, that, that are now part of our building codes in Falmouth. Wanted to thank you all for your commitment to the town of Falmouth. It's a, it's an amazing thing to see you spending all this time, working on all these fine details of planning. And I don't envy you at all for, for your work, but thank you, thank you for doing it. Falmouth adopted the Green Community Plan, or Green Community Act, less than two years ago, at town meeting. That means we adopted the stretch code, the stretch energy code. In the stretch code are the solar-ready provisions. Margaret Song from Cape Light Compact is here. She's gonna give you a little more detail on what those are, but I just wanted to say that these are things that we have to start dealing with now, because the state made a commitment in the Climate Change Act to reduce emissions of CO2 by 50% by the year 2030. That's eight years away from now. And to get to net zero by 2050. Now, you could say, well, that's the state. They made their, they set up these goals. But they put that responsibility on the electricity providers, like the Cape Light Compact, okay? And the only way we have to do that is to charge more money to pay for the energy efficiency programs, or the programs that are gonna convert all of the customers, million homes in Massachusetts, to what they call heat, heat pumps. You may, may have heard of heat pumps. It's really an air conditioner that does both, heating and cooling, but they run on electricity. They're getting much more efficient. They're, they can heat, heat a space. In fact, these are, these are heat pumps. They can heat a space down to 30 below, zero now. That's how efficient they're getting. But we have to do that, and the electricity we get has to be renewable, okay? That's the only way we're gonna meet those goals. But that's what the state is putting on the Cape Light Compact and all the other energy-providing utilities throughout the Commonwealth. So, just gonna throw this out. You talked about forming a committee earlier, and, and I think you're, you're dead on, right. I think that you're gonna have to start making sure that every new building, every new house, even multifamily houses, meets these codes, okay? And it's complicated. It's really, really complicated. The stretch energy code, or the stretch code is, is very complicated. The solar-ready provisions are not. You'll, you'll be able to understand that. But what I'm gonna say to you is, is why don't you consider getting the opinion of the energy committee for these buildings? And we can tell you. We can say, yeah, they meet the code, and they're doing the right thing, or, no, they're, they're not really doing the right thing. I'm sure, you know, I've talked to the energy committee about it. They all thought it was a good idea. It wouldn't be required. I mean, you could do what you want with our recommendation, but we could give you that information, whether it meets the new codes. All right? And, and with that, I'll, I'll give you Margaret Song. Margaret?
Just on the code, just on the code. I thought you said it is in the building code already.
It is.
The stretch code. So isn't that responsibility, the, the building inspector, when he reviews it, to put it, to make sure it's in? It's in the code. That's his job.
Well, a lot of the plan, yeah, but it's not getting, it's not getting done.
Because he's not doing it, we're gonna have to do it, is what you're saying.
Well, you're, you're gonna get the plans. You're gonna look, you're gonna see the plans, like the last one. I, I'm all for affordable housing.
I think he's asking us to add it to the, the departments that check things off before they get here, so that when it goes forward to the Building Commission and so forth, the plan is, is okay. Now he has to implement the plan. Is that it?
Okay, but the Building's Commissioner's job is that the building permits meet the building code before they come to us.
Here's, here's an example, okay? That, that project on the corner of Meeting House Road and, and T-Ticket 20, Route 28, they have, they have solar access. It would be a waste to ignore that, and, and to not take advantage of that. It's gonna be necessary in the future. Every roof in Massachusetts that has a solar orientation is gonna have to have solar photovoltaic panels to help mitigate the costs of these heat pumps that we see. That's how we're gonna get to these goals, okay? I'm gonna let Margaret explain the details, but I, I think if, if we had the energy committees check that off, get that plan, and say, "Well, you know, you need, you, you have to have solar readiness here," and I don't think it's getting addressed.
Hi, good evening. My name is Margaret Song, and I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly, because you guys are at the end of, or getting close to the end of your meeting, and I think some of this stuff will probably be fairly simple to you. And I'm gonna speak a little bit more to the site plan, too, because I think that's a little bit in your wheelhouse, more than just the specific building, which might be helpful. Just so you know, what we're talking about here is 780 CMR Appendix U, which is the solar-ready provision. This is new construction, not additions, so just wanna be clear on the definition there. As well, what we're talking about is reserving a space for future installation of solar. So it's all the wiring, it's making sure that you have those space provisions. It does not require you to actually have the solar in this provision. I will just say, though, that in the future, we don't know, right? Because every three years, there is an update to the code. So they are in the, the status of promulgating that right now. Actually, there was a webinar earlier this morning. And so we know that, at least in the opt-in code, which is not applicable to you folks at this time, they are proposing that. And that would be something that's voluntary that the town could do. But I think that's where they're heading in terms of net zero. So, just so you know, this is right now for one and two family dwelling units and townhouses. The minimum requirements are 600 square-foot of roof area and oriented 110 to 270 degrees true north. So this is where, at least on the site plan, if you know that there is a, a new site going in, and there is the ability to orient that building so that you can most take advantage of solar, I think that's a little bit of where you guys may have some input. Depends on the site. This is just a diagram, in case you wanted to know what those degrees are. Okay, so the exceptions are buildings that already have permanently-installed onsite renewables. They're not gonna make you do another XYZ more. The other thing is that they are looking at shading of more than 70% of daylight hours. This is where your landscape plans come in. What they don't want you to do is have to cut down all of the trees around you. That's not the purpose here, right? And so what they're doing is they're putting an exception there, so that you're, you're not creating that. And this just, again, shows you, this is a, an image of a solar pathfinder, and that's really where they're looking at the, the shading, and hoping not to do that. So, when you're looking at plans, and again, this may end up going in front of the building inspector, or you guys may end up seeing it, this is a solar panel layout. So what you will see is, you know, where the panel or solar-ready zone is, and they should be making sure, as I'll go in, a couple of requirements in terms of the solar. So that zone needs to be no less than 300 square feet of the, remember, 600 square feet total. And if it's a townhouse, three stories or less, and the total square footage, and again, this is, there's so many things you have to check off the boxes here, but the solar zone can only, cannot be less than 150 square feet when the, when you've got basically a small home. That's, that's really what they're defining here. The other thing is that the solar-ready zone shall be combined of the area not less than 80 by five. So they're really starting to really look at your dimensions here. So that's an important requirement that will need to be checked off. And what they're looking to make sure is that you're not going to be obstructing the solar panels. So it doesn't make any sense to put it in to not have it produce. And so what they're really trying to do is make sure that, that people are clearly looking at those obstructions. The other thing that they're really looking at, and this is for the building itself, are structural design loads. You do not want to create or an unsafe situation for the people living in that building. So you want to make sure that when you're building the home, that it is going to be structurally sound. So there are some minimum requirements for that. And then, again, this is more on the building side, but they're going to be looking for interconnection pathways. They want to make sure that you're not just wiring it, and then there's no way to put it through the building, or that you have to disrupt that later if you want to install it. So they're really looking for some checkoff in terms of how you're going to actually connect those. There was a provision that they were looking at on reserved space in the electrical panel. They did strike that, so that's not a requirement. They may revisit that in the future. That's why we've left it on here, so that you can just see it. But the idea is that if you're gonna be adding, you know, future solar electric, that you've got that, that panel ready. And then, in this construction documents, what they'll be required to do is have a permanent certificate indicating that solar-ready zone, so that people have an ability to trace it back later as to where they, they had expected that it would be, and that it met all of the requirements. And that is it. I went through that fairly quickly, just in the sake of making sure that you guys are, A, aware, and B, know maybe some of the places where we thought it would be best to include the, the planning board.
That's really very interesting. No, no presentation has come before us that pointed out anything solar-ready. That hasn't happened. I don't know that it will happen in the near future, but it hasn't happened yet.
Well, I think what they're asking for is when we receive a set of plans for a project-
That we look for.
Send a copy to them. They can, and then add that to the other reports that we get from the other-
Right.
Departments, so that they could say, yes, this is solar-ready, or it's not, or we recommend that the group be orientated this way, or they might want to make recommendations to, to-
Right.
To the building.
Right, and just make people aware of this in that way. Pat?
Well, she brought up the old Meeting House Road site that we were looking at tonight. They're not there yet in the final design, and it could be, and John's sitting there listening, so I'm trying to make it so he can hear. He's listening, okay. Because for the three new rental units that they're putting up, the three duplexes, I don't know whether it would fit it or not. They may be oriented properly right now, or it could be that a slight tweak in the orientation would bring it right in. And that could be part of the review that they're looking for right now, to say, okay, new construction, there're gonna be rentals. The lady who's doing it might be interested in doing this, because who knows whether the utilities will be included or not. And right now, it's nothing really terrible for her to do to orient it for solar capacity. And right now, it's nothing really terrible for her to do to orient it for solar capacity, I think.
Exactly. Exactly right.
Jed, as you, as you send things around to the departments for them to check off, what's, what's the turnaround time?
Well, I mean, it varies. I would say anywhere between a couple of days to sometimes a week to get back, depending on their workload.
Well, and frequently, what we're looking at for a site plan review, they're not full construction drawings. We don't, we don't see those. What we're seeing are really, in effect, preliminary drawings that show siding, grading, drainage, curb cuts. They're not construction drawings. John?
When did you say this is going to become a mandated?
It is.
It is.
Right now?
Yeah.
That it gets reviewed during the building permit process?
It should, yeah. It's, it's all fairly new and.
Matt, you're missing the really strong answer to that question, whether it's rebuilding, the building inspector's responsibility or not. You're saying it should. First, you say it's in the code, and then you're saying he should do it.
It's in the code. It's his responsibility.
It is his job.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Absolutely. But as the Planning Board, you're going to be looking at a lot of these plans and, you know, you can, you can nudge them along and say, where's your solar readiness?
Somebody has to figure out the pathways for the electronics. You almost need to be an electrician. We don't look at where they do the wiring, how it runs through the house, and how it goes meter.
Well, that's why you.
That's his job.
That's, that's right. And, and you could send a plan, or he could send a plan to the Energy Committee and say, hey, what's up with this one? Does this meet all our requirements? I, I want to see stuff happen in Falmouth, okay? I'm going to be getting the calls from people who go nuts because their electric bills go through the roof. It's, they're going up. They're going up. And we're paying for this, and it's an unfunded mandate. Not that I'm against it, but we have to pay for this stuff. And our, our, the energy efficiency portion of our electric bill is going to go up, is it going to double almost? I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's, it sounds like a lot. It's still, you know, a small portion of your overall bill, but it's going to force the electric bill up and continue to go up as we get closer to these deadlines.
It seems as if the biggest effect the Planning Board could have is during site plan review, looking at the orientation of the buildings. Because other than that, not much of it, none of it comes under our direct preview, purview. So it just wouldn't, it wouldn't happen. And the kind of drawings that we get aren't going to show the level of detail that are going to allow you to know whether or not the roof has been made strong enough, that they have left this area open, that the, so the part that we can do is clear, but I don't know about the rest. And I don't know that we should be adding to the review process, or if you even have the staffing on the Energy Committee to turn it around.
We're, it's, it's something we could do on our own. I mean, it's not, we don't need staffing. It'd be nice to have staffing, but obviously, that's not the case.
I mean, we've done it on some projects where we've asked them to rotate the.
We have?
The roof.
Yep.
Even the road layout, I mean, for a new development, could, could impact the, you know, the optimization of solar orientation for, for the homes on it.
Oh, and will it weigh? If you go along the road, all those houses are situated for solar gain.
Yeah.
Because typically, the front porch would be on the street, but it's our side door that's on the street.
Right. So.
And it was over solar, you did that?
Yeah. Yeah. We, we do all our developments for solar orientation because we build a net-zero house.
This is Habitat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a great article on, on Habitat's homes in, was it The Enterprise or The Cape Cod Times?
Cape Cod Times, I believe.
Cape Cod Times. And, and they're getting net zero, which is fantastic. And, and people will thank you in the future.
In the future.
For your foresight and, and helping. Let's, let's work together to, to make this happen. I, I, you know, I realize this isn't exactly your valley wick, but.
We have certainly upped our awareness and, you know, just more power to you for the work that you're doing.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everything you do. And I'm sorry for keeping you so late.
Oh, and.
We kept you that way.
You were good to stick with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin, are we doing something that you need?
Yeah, I understand for the, uh, no way.
Ah.
And what?
We have one more item.
Couldn't hear.
There's a discussion item for.
You wanted to spend time with your.
Yeah. Sorry. Should have known.
I'm texting my wife's birthday. I'm in, uh, Polo's trouble.
Oh, oh, oh.
She spent the day moving us, so I, like I said, lots of trouble.
He doesn't want to go home, in other words.
I am so, I am sorry.
It's okay. Don't be sorry.
Um, let's take that one out of order also. Let's go immediately now to Binghamum PRD, Timothy Bourne Cartway. John's going to recuse himself. Kevin, your turn.
I mean, I've, I've said most of my, my piece on this at the last hearing, and I know the board had planned to open it up tonight, so I think that.
Well, whether we open it or not, we don't know that we will open it.
Sure. I mean, I, I think the board is going to discuss it further tonight. You know, I think as a bit of an update, we did receive correspondence that I forwarded to Jed from Main Street Bank, who's the lender who's issued the mortgage, which said, Dear Mr. Cornoch, it has come to our attention the Planning Board is considering imposing additional considerations to, to the definitive plan laying out Dillon's Way. Our institution, Main Street Bank, provided Cape Cod Development LLC with financing in the amount of $1.8 million for the purchase and development of Dillon's Way and six single-family residences. This loan was approved based on the Planning Board's decision, the plan of record, the pro forma, and the pro forma prepared by the borrower. Alterations to the conditions of the decision, including the requirement of alternative wastewater systems, would alter the documents that we rely upon in our issuance of the mortgage. It's my understanding that since the property has been financed in good faith, that any alterations require the consent of the mortgagee, Main Street Bank. The holder of the mortgage will not agree to any modifications that will impose additional expenses upon the project, other than those that were considered already in the issuance of the loan. If you have any considerations, please contact me at (978) 487-1486 or t. sibley@bankmainstreet.com. Sincerely, Todd W. Sibley, Vice President, Commercial Loan Officer.
Thank you. Now, just as a reminder, do you remember where we are on this? We, this would be a two-step. We, there was an oversight in writing this up so that the requirement for the IA system was not included in the final decision. Could have been, should have been, wasn't. Our mistake, ours, whoever. We have two things we could do. We could open up the question again. That would be a vote, whether we open up the issue again. And if we do, then we would have to make a decision whether to include it or not. So that the, the initial decision is, do we reopen the question? And we have heard that the, the work has gone forward far enough that all of the mortgaging, the financial arrangements have been made for the project and not factored this in. And we learned tonight, they're very expensive. It would be an important thing to have left out, and it was our mistake. So our issue is, do we want to reopen it and make, to put this burden onto the developer or not? So we're open to discussion on that.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's, to remain to the conversation, the letter that Kevin just read into the record that Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81W indicates that you need the approval of the mortgagee in order to essentially require this, to modify your decision to then require it.
And it is not forthcoming.
And you just said no.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
So I think the question for you tonight is how you want to handle this, cleaning up the record, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Because at least it would be my recommendation that you not open the hearing, considering the fact that you already sort of know the endpoint.
Okay. So could I just ask you each to comment on, do you see any point in reopening it?
No.
No.
Anybody?
No.
No. Okay, thanks.
May I suggest that we, that you authorize us to, the Planning Department, to just write a simple indication that.
Please.
You know, it is not required. We file it with the clerk. We put it into the file. We sort of just clean up the record so that if anyone were lurking back after we're gone, they have record of what is there.
It would be there. Okay, good.
It was our mistake. I don't think others should pay for it.
Right.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening.
I'm sorry that you had to wait so long.
I learned something tonight. I learned, I learned many new things tonight. That's.
Yeah, I know. We've all learned a lot.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. And we have one more to go. A request for administrative approval to convert two parking spaces, which we all got a map to see which two, directly in front of the door at the senior center. Do we want to give administrative approval?
Yes.
Yes.
Administrative approval for this item. That's mine.
Second. And we're all in favor.
All in favor.
Excellent.
Aye.
Okay. Do any announcements? No? Any correspondence?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
May I want to just note, we included in your packet, maybe Paul would like to.
I'd like to address this. I received a email from Wayne Lingerfelder, who's the Executive Director of EDIC, and we discussed the possibility of being on the agenda, make his informal presentation next week. He requested that. He withdrawed that until maybe next month. So I suggest we don't discuss this now and bring it up again when he's going to talk about it.
Okay. But thank you for bringing this to us, Paul. I think that we're all going to have strong opinions on what's proposed there.
No. That's the way to have it.
Right. So we'll be very glad to have him come. Thank you. And you're thinking like March 8?
I didn't cable this until he comes.
March 8? It would be March 8, did you say?
Potentially.
Yeah.
We didn't give a date. I suggested next meeting, based on our discussion. And he got back and said he'd prefer to put it off until.
March.
March.
Okay. Which would be March 8.
Just hold this. You don't have to repeat it.
Absolutely. And just for the record, it appears as though they're going to, the EDIC is going to post the video of the public meeting on their website. So if folks are interested, they can Google Falmouth EDIC, go to their projects page and find the Falmouth Station. The indication is that the video will be posted sometime soon.
Okay, great.
If I can make a comment on.
Would you?
Notice. I attended EDIC meeting yesterday, and one of the presentations was the Sustainability Director from HOE talking about what she's doing down there. It was an absolutely excellent presentation. And I think we should maybe talk to her some time, or perhaps we can get the PowerPoint distributed to the, to the board, the kinds of things she did, and the kind of things that they got funding for, and how they made a lot of money on doing the improvements within the HOE.
That would be good.
So it was an excellent presentation.
Do you think the presentation will help us move forward on the kinds of things that the Coastal Resiliency Report asks us to work with?
I didn't really want to get into this, but maybe we should since you've asked a question. Article 28, proposed by Rosemary Carey and others, is for a Sustainability Coordinator for the town of Falmouth. And it says, if I remember correctly, the town is asked to set the conditions and time and conditions for that person to come on board. I believe it should be a full-time position with staffing. Someone put in that, in that article, coastal resiliency. Well, the Coastal Resiliency Coordinator recommended by the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee was a very important one. Charlie McCaffrey made several presentations to, now the Select Board, came to us, the Planning Board, also to Strategic Planning Session of the Select Board. I attended that. I emphasized the need to get that Coastal Resiliency Coordinator. The function's very different than what Sustainability Coordinator is doing. And I think there's a need, a serious need for two positions and supporting staff. So I don't know why it's in the article now with the word coastal resiliency because they're different functions.
Ah.
And I'm going to try to find out why that was placed there. But I think they're two very different, very important positions that the town should consider hiring. And I know there's a shortage of personnel in town, in this building, and elsewhere. But I think it's time to support those, those two items. You asked.
I did ask. Thank you.
You just go ahead.
Um, now.
I have one other comment. Hope we're not falling behind on the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
No, I think, I think you're all up to date.
We didn't get the last one, did we?
We didn't get the last.
Well, I mean, you're close to up to date. You cleared the deck last time and.
Took me a long time to go through 10 minutes.
Right. So we've got another bunch coming. So move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Long meeting. Thank you for sticking with it.